Yeah, our audio system is dead. So, we're gonna have to talk very loud. And because of that reason, we're gonna have to ask for a little bit of cooperation with everyone kind of quiet as we talk. It's gonna be very difficult. It may come up here soon, he's gonna shut the power system down and try to start it. So, just have patience with us, we're just gonna have to talk loud. I wanna go ahead and call this regular meeting of the trustees of Lyon Township, March 4th, 2019. And could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Kelly, please let the roll show that we are all present. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. I hope everyone's had a chance to read through that.
I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, I would ask that, guessing I know why the majority of people are here tonight, and in light of that, I'm going to request that the new business items be moved ahead of the unfinished business. That's a lot of ordinance amendment stuff that certainly everyone's welcome to stay here for, but in the interest of time, I would ask that new business A through D be moved behind unfinished business A, so we'll have the Artesian to Pioneer water discussion, and then we'll go right to new business.
I will second that.
Okay, we also had, just quickly...
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think the Pearl gentleman was coming from Cleveland.
Yes.
And we'd like to put him at the end.
Yes.
Okay. Everybody got that one?
Which one is that?
It's 10B.
So, 10B will remain last. Okay, and then I'd also like to mention that there's an amended agenda. This will be an amended agenda. There were some renumbering of ordinances or correction of, I should say, ordinance numbers in unfinished business 9C and 9D. Just to be aware of that.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the agenda and the changes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's move on to the announcements and communications. Anyone have anything?
I'd like to make everybody aware that if you are a library patron, they are doing a survey, and it would be very helpful and beneficial to the library. You would take some time and do that survey. They're looking for some new input, and it's pretty quick, so I know that they would appreciate that help.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move to the call to the public. This is when you can stand up and talk about non-agenda items if you'd like. Come on up and anything you wanna talk about.
Do you mean if we wanna say something now about the village, side of the village, we say it now, or we say it when you're having a discussion?
Okay, now, one thing that we do wanna make sure that everyone understands, this is a conceptual review, which is basically an information exchange between the township board and the applicant. The public hearing part of the whole system will be coming at a later date if the applicant decides that everything is good and he wants to move forward. There will be public hearings held that every comment there is, no problem, you can come up and talk about it. Tonight, I will say that after the conversation's over, because there's so many interested people, we will take a limited number. We'll go ahead and let at least 20 minutes worth and a couple minutes apiece, is that fair? And then everyone can come up and talk about it if they'd like. Okay? Does that sound fair? So, now the call to the public would be anyone that's interested in talking about any other situation.
So, if I have a question about the water...
Yeah, that's, now's the time. Come on up, stand, come on up.
Okay, so my...
Yeah, we need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Jason Mazur, I live in Tanglewood.
Okay.
So, we were told that we're getting some new water.
Yes.
New pump house. For the last six months, my water's been really bad. I have pictures, it's now green, so it's almost pond water. I've got an eight-year-old and a five-year-old. What I'd like to know is, number one, are we testing the water monthly?
Yes.
Can I get a copy of all the test reports?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
All the way back to when we started?
It'll cost you a couple pennies, I'm gonna give it to you. That's the last two months' work.
So, has there been, from what you've reviewed, has there been any concern or issues with the test results?
None at all. The problem is aesthetics. The aesthetics of the water is not pleasing, and that's what this whole process that we're going through now is to remedy. This new water treatment plant that'll be online very shortly will pretty much take care of all them problems. You will never have them again.
So, green water's okay for my dis...
It sounds to me like that's a manganese, and we never could take the manganese out of the water. The iron filter system that we have only takes the iron, and it's only a portion of the iron. We've never been able to take it all out. The new system that comes online will take it all out with the manganese.
But what am I, what are we doing until the new system comes out? If the manganese, is the manganese poisoning?
No.
Is that okay?
No, it is not.
It's not?
It's just aesthetics. It's the color of the water. It's like iron, it's a mineral.
And that, and so it says in here that it's not, it's not...
Yeah, anything that's harmful will be absent from the water. And that's what them reports, they are very hard to read.
These are back...
December and January. I can get you a hold of that.
Okay.
But it's coming, and I'll tell ya, it's a major undertaking that we're taking here. I mean, these treatment plants are millions of dollars.
Right.
And it's just, it's an undertaking that takes time, and we're getting very close. We're getting very close to really giving you some really, really good treated water. It's coming, very close.
Okay.
And I think if you wanted to stick around, I think we have, Mr. Kitston from Pioneer will be here, and he'll kinda give you some updating on what's going on and...
Okay, 'cause we've got some interested third parties...
I understand.
...in the test results.
Sure.
Everybody knows what's going on in Michigan with the water and the issues that we had in Flint, so folks from the Flint area are contacting residents in Tanglewood and want information.
Sure. I can guarantee you, if there was any bad water going to any house, the DEQ would be all over a shutdown, because they are running scared because of Flint.
Right.
So, they're watching this very closely.
Good.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to come up? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the reports. And in the report section, we have the DDA up first. Tina?
Okay, I'm gonna try to talk as loud as I can. So, first of all, I just wanted to give you an update. I now have the ability, using our BSNA software, to go back and pull information about the level of investment that's taken place in our downtown and also throughout the community. So, I went back and pulled information for the last four and a half years, and in 2015, we saw a level of $24 million invested in commercial and industrial projects in the township. In 2016, that number was $9,973,000. In 2017, it was $19,155,000. In 2018, it was $6,669,000. And just the first two months of 2019, it's $28,359,000. Now, these are including some of the major projects that we've seen over the last four years, such as the Magna development, the expansion of Pan-Rob, the addition of Zeiss exotic automation, the $6 million gun range. These are all rolled into those numbers. So, I just wanted to provide that recap, that in the last four years then, we've seen $88,208,356 invested in commercial and industrial projects in the township. So, I hope to provide on a monthly basis now, information on those levels of investment as we move forward. Also, the DDA board met on February 12th, and at that meeting, we had our township consulting engineer give us an update on the new Hudson drain project. A lot of number crunching was done to calculate the cost, estimated cost of that project. That was shared, and then we're also waiting for a report back from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. They're the ones doing the study on the Wall Bridge property, one of 16 properties that have been chosen by the state of Michigan to be evaluated for future development for industrial projects. We should hope to hear back from the MEDC with that report at the end of March, and it'll be presented then to the communities in April. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that. Also, just some minor changes, we had Sarah Trexler representing McKenna at our meetings. We've made a change over to have Erin Schultro, Schluthrow, representing us. Erin works in the office, so she's much more familiar with the ins and outs of all the projects that are taking place. Also, I just wanted to give you an update on the township website. So, we still have some fine-tuning work to do. Many have been contributing to the project. Some of the things that are holding us up is some of the forms and the maps that we're working to get updated, because we don't wanna put old information on the new website. But I will be asking to be put on the April 1st agenda for a presentation. And I did do a little presentation to the DDA board, and that took about 40 minutes to go through. So, it's a big chunk of time that we just wanna make sure we have enough time set aside so that people can ask questions and we can go through those details. So, that'll be on the April 1st agenda. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Any questions for Tina? Okay, we're moving on to fire. Boy, do we have some news for the fire. All right? The news for the fire, sitting right out front there.
Just a line.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah, as you came in, you should've seen our brand-new fire engine, and our fire marshal vehicle has also come in, and that's being detailed right now. We're having a dedication for the new engine on Saturday, March 16th, at the fire station at 11:00 a.m. We have Fire Chaplain Ray Ahonan, who's going to officiate, and he'll have the push and ceremonies. I wanted to invite all of you that helped make this happen, and also the public as well. We'll provide some type of items, coffee and snacks and things like that, but it's actually a pretty cool thing for the township, we're really excited about it. And I also wanted to...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I wanted to recognize one of our own, Reg Madeline, who is a sergeant and a fire inspector with our department. He's also a public safety officer with Farmington Public Safety, and his wife Erin is here, along with his deputy chief Ted Worthman from Farmington. There was an incident about a week ago where it was a medical call that came in in Farmington. Reg had responded and ended up going upstairs. This ended up being a structured fire, and the woman was unable to get out, and Reg sacrificed his own safety, had another police officer grab a fire extinguisher as he went in, threw heavy smoke down near the floor, and the woman was reluctant to go. And he did some very much nicer persuasion than most of us would do, but that's what Reg does. So, he saved this woman's life, got her outside, and ended up getting treated at the hospital himself. But the story's in Farmington, but it also reflects well on our fire department as well. And I just would like to recognize Sergeant Reg Madeline for...
Okay.
And on cue, I also wanted to recognize two companies that, this is our images of our burn building. And we had Alton Equipment and Pratt &amp; Miller that came out, and they offered their services at no charge to the community or to the fire department. So, this does not happen real easily when you have to put a burn container, make a second floor. Pratt &amp; Miller cannot be here tonight, but they are receiving a plaque as well. But I would like to invite John Matt and Mike Adams from Alton Equipment to come on up here. So, this is the plaque that I'm sure they'll probably display in this office. It's in recognition of your support of the safety and training of firefighters in Lyon Township 2019, and this is our shield, and we thank you guys, John.
Thank you very much.
Mike.
Thank you.
You can't do it without the cooperation of businesses like yours, and again, Pratt &amp; Miller will be receiving a very similar plaque, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
That's about my longest presentation ever, so I can't...
And these burning, this burning training that you have has really went over pretty well.
Yeah, and I should've probably elaborated on, you know, it's not just the, it's the fabricating, it's cutting these windows and doors in and putting them in place, but it's not just training our firefighters, that we have had fire departments from this whole area, not just neighboring communities, but from the northern part of Oakland County and other parts, where, you know, we will provide training officers, and they can train their own firefighters, they can work with us, or, you know, we're not charging for it. It helps all of us if we're all better prepared and safer.
Well, thank you so much, that's great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ken.
Appreciate that. Lieutenant?
I suppose you have a live feed, is that what?
I know it isn't, that's all we're trying to yell, and just yell at us if we're not talking loud enough. Yell back. Lieutenant, anything from the sheriff's office?
I don't really have anything to pass on over the last month. I hope everybody got a chance to read the triage report. We're up just a little over 1,600 calls this year from last, but the good thing is that almost all are in my category for help. So, a lot of our extra calls are, I guess you could say, calls for good things. More lockouts, things of a more helpful nature that people call and rely on us for. So, with that, unless you have any questions about it, that's all I really have.
That's great. Any questions? Thanks, Lieutenant, thank you very much. Moving on to the planning commission. Can everyone in the back hear? Can you hear? Still got us, are you good? Okay.
There are seats up closer in the front, too.
Yeah, we're gonna try to keep talking loud.
It'll force the speaker to speak more loudly to you, and he will also hear.
Okay, but then they yell at us.
It's a chance.
We're gonna try to talk as loud as we can, okay? We'll ask them, maybe we'll have them face you guys. Thank you.
Okay, I love it. Little under the weather, so I will try to speak as loud as I can. In the month of February, we had two planning commission meetings. The first one was held Monday, February 11th. We held two public hearings. The first public hearing was Hans Water and Power Special Land Use, and the other public hearing was also the Hans Water Power Site Plan. Both agenda items or public hearings were held, and they were, the property was tabled for additional information. So, that was those two. And then, under Old Business, we had the Aspen Trail PD. It was a final review, and that was tabled for some landscaping and location of the pump station. So, they have to both come back to the planning commission. That was all on the February 11th report. Our other planning commission meeting was held Monday, February 25th, and we only had one agenda item, and that was the Senior Independent Living Conditional Rezoning Review, which is on our agenda tonight, and that was recommended to the township board by the planning commission. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Patty? Okay. Moving on to the ZBA, Lisa, any meetings?
We had a meeting, and the applicant was Arrow Group for requesting a variance from Section 36.02 for asking to locate part of the fence that encloses the outdoor play area within the 25-foot vegetated strip, and that was approved.
Okay. Thank you. Park Advisory Board, Robert, you wanna get up and give us your take?
So, during our last meeting, we took a look at some of the options for playground equipment in the...
Speak up.
We took a look at some options for playground equipment at the upcoming 11 Mile Park, discussed some status on that and other projects we've got going on, as well as our plans for investigating the park use speeds and comparing that with neighboring communities to see that we're aligned. We also talked briefly about the trust fund grant application coming up. I'm not sure what the outcome decision was, but there will be a public hearing on that, either at our next meeting or the next township board meeting, going back and forth on that, but we'll be discussing it either way. And we also, just to give a heads up, in case anyone is interested in attending or having input, at our meeting on Tuesday, the 19th, we'll be discussing some options for a Veterans Memorial at the 11 Mile Park, as well as, we have a presentation coming from the junior day asking for submit whatever project.
Great, thank you, Robert, thank you very much. Bob, anything, DPW?
Just a couple things. The department is constantly responding to the weather, depending what it is, whether it be rain and ice or snow. It's at the year-end reports, sending stuff to the DEQ right now, such as consumer confidence reports that we're getting prepared and cross-connection reports. I've been in touch with Dean Roofing for the roof at the library. As soon as the weather breaks, they will be on the job site, and we're dealing with the light deck I hit on the ring road, and that will be repaired probably in three to five weeks, as soon as we get that piece of equipment. Or, it's been ordered, but until it gets in, so... And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very, very much. This is where we're gonna move on. Now, we talked about the Artesian is moved, right? We moved him down?
They're gonna stay.
Okay, so then we can go ahead and have you come up and give your water report now?
Look, I stand over here, and I can talk to you and talk to them. I'm Ed Kitston with Artesian, and as John stated earlier, you know, we have a substantial water improvement project going on in the township as we speak. I do wanna address the one comment earlier. We have nothing to do with your operation at the present time, we're actually constructing your new treatment, but I have been in discussion with your current water quality, and it's absolutely safe to drink, and that's true whether you're one month old or 100 years old. It's safe to drink. It doesn't look so well right now. That's what we are solving at the present time. The discoloration is from iron and manganese that is in your water. That's not harmful in any way. You could drink hundreds of gallons of it every day, and it not harm you, okay? So, your water quality is safe. It just looks bad right now. As far as the update, many of you have seen the tower that's been sitting at Nine Mile and Griswold for about six, seven months now. In the next few weeks, actually as soon as the Fuss Law goes off, you'll start to see construction begin there, and a tank will go up, and that new water tank will hold a million gallons of treated water. It should be finished, you know, in the June time period. We'll have Lyon Township's logo and name on it, so that you'll all know that it's yours, and it'll provide a lot of new water pressure for many of places in the township that's lacking at this present time, and also create more storage for the summertime, 'cause you've had a substantial growth here in the township. And right now, you only have 750,000 gallons of elevated storage. This new tank will add a million, so we're gonna double it with this one tank. And then there's another tank to be built at a later time. The treatment plants, South Hill has been approved. I missed last month's meeting, but I think you're all aware, we do have approval at South Hill, and actually, we are beginning site work at South Hill now, so the South Hill Water Treatment Plant is under construction as we speak. And the best news of the night is that the Woodwind Water Treatment Plant, which we've been constructing now for the last few months, is almost finished. Sorry for the appearance here tonight a little bit, but I've been out with the guys in the field all day today. We are actually running water at Woodwind, doing preliminary testing. We really, really hope in the next two weeks to three weeks at most, that plant will be fully tested and will be online, and at that point, your water's not going to improve overnight, but from that point forward, your water will start to get better and better and better. And within, when we get into springtime, most likely, the township employees will go around and flush all the hydrants, try to get all the discolorated water out of the pipes, and you'll have treated water going forward. Any questions?
Anyone got any questions for Ed?
Ed, what color is that water gonna be?
It's green, I hope.
Won't be green, it'll be nice, clear, beautiful water.
Thank you.
Yes. It'll taste good, and be safe to drink, and won't stain your laundry and stain the bathtub and everything else, so it'll be great water. You're gonna love it.
Ed, what's the...
Really, really just a couple weeks away from doing that.
Hey, Ed, what's the status on the softening component?
Softening's the next challenge we're attacking at right now, and we'll be submitting things to DEQ here, hopefully before your next meeting. We've got some plans that we're trying to work through. We got South Hill approved, got it started, and the next challenge is the softening. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, man, can I take a question here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Are we going to stop using our softeners that we have in our house, at our homes?
Right now, I'm gonna say to you, don't anybody throw their water softener away. Don't anybody stop using their water softener at the present time. Let's let this settle and see what the quality of the water is, and as we go forward, that may be an option, or you may wanna set it back. Keep in mind that we don't have softening approved yet by DEQ, and it's been a struggle, I'll be frank with you. But even if we do get softening approved, right now, your water is about 20 to 22 grains hard. If we get softening approved, DEQ will only allow us to soften it down to seven grains, so about cut it in half or a little more. So, if you're, if you have a residential water softener right now, it's putting out zero, if it's working, okay, it's putting out zero soft water. The difference between zero soft water and seven grain water, many, many people can't recognize that, okay? But there are some who can. So, my suggestion and recommendation to you tonight, and probably for the next several months, keep your water softener, keep operating it as normal, and as we move forward here, you'll be able to determine whether or not you wanna do away with that cost, okay? Good question.
I have a follow-up. What about, to compare like the city of Detroit water, how many DEQs or whatever, would their water be at?
Detroit city water's about 10, 11 grains hard. And, yeah, yeah. And frankly, probably nobody in this room can tell the difference between seven and 11, okay? You can tell the difference between three and 19, but hardness is, you know, if you get in that seven to 15 range, people are very, very happy with that type of quality of water. Anything else? Anything else? Okay, hang in there with us. We're only a couple of weeks away. It's coming, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to move on to the new business. Consideration of the introduction of the conceptual review for Cider Mill Village PD, AP 1856. And again, before we start, I just want to let everyone here know that this is conceptual. It is a conceptual review. We are going to be trading information back and forth on the prospects of this development. That being said, it isn't a public hearing, as I mentioned before, but we would like to hear, we are very, we'd like to hear the residents. When they come out like this, we do like their thoughts. One thing we'd like you to do is if, let the board deliberate, change the information back and forth. And if you hear something that hasn't been brought up, and you'd like to come up and interject that into the conversation, that's very welcoming. But I think that a lot of the information that you're seeking will be talked about as we go forward. But we will, we will allow about a 20-minute comment after we're finished, and anyone's welcome to come up in that time span, okay? Does that sound fair to everyone? Yes, yes, yes? Okay.
John, I would like to make a comment before we begin this next agenda item. My property is adjacent to this project site, and it is my understanding that I'm required to disclose this, as this may create a conflict of interest.
Okay, so you're asking for recusal?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think I want to add to this, just for the record. Trustee Blade's property happens to be located adjacent to where the offices are proposed. And because of that, there, you know, there may be a significant impact on her property. And under the circumstances, she believes it's best, you know, that there's a potential conflict, so that there's no question about whether she's being fair in this situation. And that's why she's moving to be recused from this. And I will require a motion to allow her to be recused, and the vote has to be unanimous.
Make a motion to allow Trustee Blade's to be recused and abstain from voting in this matter as well?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for recusal of Trustee Blade's. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do I vote?
No.
Okay.
But the record should reflect now that she's no longer present in the meeting.
Okay.
John, to kind of follow up with that statement, you know, I review every development proposal that comes before me, like it is going to be built in my backyard. This one is no different. The only, I guess, oddball thing is this is actually in my backyard as well. My property does abut this as well. So I just want that noted, for the record, that I am adjacent to this proposed development.
Okay.
And I guess for the record, though, you've looked at this in relationship to what's proposed to be developed next to you, and it's your feeling that that per se isn't negatively affecting you any differently from the public, so you're just approaching this like you would any other project before you?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I guess I have to say also that, even though it doesn't touch my property, I also am in the subdivision that abuts the Irwin's parcel. So I just want to make it clear that people also understand where I live and my responsibility. But I feel the same way as Chris. I look at everything evenly with my open eyes. So I feel that I can represent the township fairly.
All right, thank you.
I'm also going to self-abutse.
Okay.
And you're echoing what the other two have said.
I might as well tell you I am not. I'm sorry, I had to. All right, that being said, let's move on forward to our first order of business here. Patrick? Start us off.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to read from my letter of February 27th of 2019. And I have the letter up on the screen, and I'm going to try to scroll through it as I read through it, just so that we're, you kind of see where I am in reading the letter. The proposal is Application 18-56, Cider Mill Village Plan Development. The applicant is Pinnacle Homes by MI Homes. And the proposal is for a mixed-use residential development on 264.4 acres of land located on nine parcels at or around the intersections of Silver Lake Road and Kent Lake Road and Silver Lake Road and Pontiac Trail. The current zoning of the property is Zoned R 1.0 Residential-Agricultural. As part of the project, the applicant proposes to relocate and realign Kent Lake Road to connect directly to Pontiac Trail, which is illustrated on the plans. The connection will allow access between the two roads without having to make the turn, therefore improving the north-south traffic flow in the area. And we'll comment on this proposal in more detail later in the letter. For the project description, the development includes a mix of retail, office, or municipal use, recreation, apple orchard, and residential development. There's a summary here on the bottom of page one, and the summary is, "The proposal has 241 single-family homes, 146 single-family active adult homes, 192 village flat units or apartments, a mix of non-residential uses in the southwest part of the development, including part of the current orchard, retail, restaurant, a rec center, community garden, event center, and community buildings, retail and office uses in the northeast part of the development, and finally, 129.4 acres of open space on the site." The next part of our review will describe the plan development process. The applicant is seeking a plan development approval, which is a zoning district that goes along with a plan. The steps of a plan development include three separate steps. The first is conceptual review. That's the step that we're at right now. The next step is preliminary review, and the last step is final review. At each step, both the Planning Commission and the Township Board hold a meeting and review the application. So currently, we're at conceptual review. The Planning Commission held its meeting on February 6, 2019, for the conceptual review. As part of the conceptual review, the Planning Commission and the Township Board review the application, provide comment to the applicant, and ask questions. At conceptual review, there are no votes taken, and that doesn't take place until later in the process, which is the next step at preliminary review. Once conceptual review concludes, then the applicant then goes on to preliminary review. At preliminary review, that's the point at which the public hearing is held by the Planning Commission, and the development is settled in terms of, if it is approved, it settles the number of units, the proposed uses, pedestrian layout of the development, and other layout aspects of the development. And again, both the Planning Commission and the Township Board review the plans at preliminary review and vote on the plans. If those plans are approved, then it goes on to the final review, where both the Planning Commission and the Township Board review the final plans. So again, we're at conceptual review with the Township Board, and again, there's no vote taking place, just comment with the applicant. The next item in our review letter looks at the existing land use, zoning district, and future land use classification of not just the subject site, but also the surrounding sites. The subject property is designated Single Family Residential A on the future land use map, and that provides for a development at a density of 1 1/4 units per acre, which corresponds to the current R1 zoning classification. On the table, I'll just highlight the first row here for the subject parcels that are subject to the application. The existing land use is Irwin Orchard and Cider Mill. There's one existing home and consists of mostly vacant land on the site. The current zoning is R 1.0 for the entire nine acres, and that corresponds to 1 1/4 units per acre with sewer. And the future land use classification in the master plan is Single Family Residential A, which also corresponds to up to 1 1/4 units per acre. The rest of the table looks at the surrounding land uses and the zoning districts and the future land use classifications of the surrounding property. I won't go through each one, but we can always refer back to it later in the meeting. This is also online in the meeting packet as well. There are two remaining items to go through in the review letter. There are two fairly major items. The first is the eligibility criteria. The applicant has to meet a criteria in order to be eligible to apply for a plan development. The second item in the letter will get into some of the design standards for a plan development. So first with the eligibility criteria. To be eligible for the plan development, Section 7.02 of the zoning ordinance requires the applicant to demonstrate that all eight criteria are met. The first criteria is whether the development will have a recognizable benefit. And the applicant has proposed, in the application, a few different benefits that they're proposing to the township. The first is the preservation of the existing Irwin Orchard and Cider Mill operation. According to the application, the proposed development preserves 12 acres of the apple orchard and rehabilitates the existing retail store. The second proposed recognizable benefit is the relocation and realignment of Kent Lake Road. The existing alignment of Kent Lake Road has been noted in the current master plan of Lyon Township as a roadway interchange needing improvement. The proposed reconfiguration of this intersection has the potential to alleviate some traffic concerns, provided the traffic study is acceptable to the township's engineers and the road design is acceptable to the road commission for Oakland County. And we'll get into some of the traffic impact a little bit later in the letter, especially as it relates to Oakland County's review and some other information that the township's traffic engineer has requested. The next item in the proposed recognizable benefit is providing a village center. After that is a proposal to provide municipal building property. The applicant is proposing about 14.7 acres for a low-rise office facility and/or municipal use. The applicant proposes to allocate one building pad within the office facilities to be donated for a future municipal use by the township or other township-approved government entity. At this time, we are not aware of any township plan or proposal for a municipal use at the site. So at the present conceptual review stage for this development, the Township Board can discuss the municipal use proposal in more detail when it reviews the conceptual plan. And the next proposal for a recognizable benefit is providing the township funding for a ladder truck. And although the contributions to a ladder truck fund would be beneficial to the entire Lyon Township community and would service more than just the Cider Mill Village, both the Planning Commission and Township Board should determine whether the benefit of this contribution should justify additional density for the proposed project. The next item for the eligibility criteria is the minimum size. The minimum size of a plan development is 40 acres, and the site, including all of the property proposed, is 264.4 acres in size. There is one exception, and that is the land northwest of the intersection of Kent Lake Road and Silver Lake Road is under 40 acres. The zoning ordinance defines a contiguous lot as a lot that adjoins each other. The zoning ordinance does not clearly define what an adjoining land is. If the Planning Commission and Township Board determine that all nine subject parcels are contiguous and adjoining, then the standard is met. However, if the Planning Commission and Township Board determine that land across a road is not contiguous, then the applicant must apply for a waiver to include land northwest of the intersection of Kent Lake Road and Silver Lake Road. In at least one former plan development, parcels on separate sides of the road have been classified as contiguous and reviewed under a single PD, but each PD stands on its own based on the unique area. So this is something that we can address in more detail if the contiguous lot size becomes an issue. The third criteria for the eligibility is the use of public services. This is broken down into three general parts. The first is the water and sewer facilities, and on this, our comments are very brief in that we defer to the township's engineer regarding the water and sewer capacity and the availability of any REUs. The next one is the road, or roads. There is a traffic impact study that was completed by Rowe Professional Services and was submitted with the application. The township engineer, CES, has engaged the services of a transportation engineering firm, GHD, to review the transportation impact study and the electronic data files of the study. GHD's review letter, which is dated January 11, 2019, is included with CES's review letter, and we will defer to both regarding the traffic impact study. However, GHD has noted that the traffic impact study requires additional information before it can be reviewed. And CES has also recommended that the applicant apply to the road commission for Oakland County for conceptual approval of the realignment of Kent Lake Road prior to PD review, or preliminary PD review. Because this realignment relates directly to the master plan policies on the density in the area, we recommend that a general feasibility of the realignment be determined, and that the plans return to conceptual review for comment by the Planning Commission and Township Board on the density. Concurrently, we recommend that the traffic impact study be revised according to GHD's recommendation, and that the revised traffic study be reviewed by GHD. Oftentimes, at a conceptual review, if there is a traffic impact study that needs modification, sometimes that is deferred to preliminary review as long as the other standards of the ordinance appear to have been met. But given the complexity of this proposed plan development, and some of the density that's requested, and the density's relationship to the master plan on that matter, we do recommend that that information be provided, and that we review again at conceptual review, just so that we have more information before getting into some of those specific discussions about the master plan and the density. And then finally, with respect to stormwater management, we will defer to CES's review letter regarding the stormwater management system. The fourth criteria for the eligibility of a plan development is the compatibility with the master plan. The subject site in its entirety is located within the Single Family Residential A area of the future land use map. The most recent amendment to the master plan was in December of 2015, and it examined this specific area, which was called Study Area Number Five. The master plan concluded that the future land use classification of this area is Single Family Residential A. And the future land use classification of Single Family Residential A corresponds to the current R1 zoning, which is a density of 1 1/4 units per acre. The Cider Mill Village development proposes a density of 2.3 units per acre, which is more similar to the Single Family Residential C classification. The development proposes the 2.3 units per acre, which exceeds the current Single Family Residential A by one additional unit per acre. Specifically, with respect to Study Area Five, the master plan states the following. "Upon studying the northwest corner of the township, the Planning Commission found that, like the 10-mile road corridor, it faces the constraints of high traffic volumes on an inadequate two-lane road system. The transportation difficulties are compounded by the offset of Kent Lake Road and Pontiac Trail, so a continuous route to I-96 is lacking. Based on these considerations, the Planning Commission concluded it would be prudent to designate the undeveloped lands as Single Family Residential A, recognizing that reevaluation of this designation may be in order if solutions to the road inadequacies were implemented." And that gets back to our previous comments about the road, is we recommend that prior to having discussions about any changes to the future land use map, that we have some of that data on the traffic, notably the road commission's review or conceptual review of the proposed alignment, and GHD's review of the full traffic impact study, so that we have all that background information before entertaining any changes to the master plan. And then later, farther down the list, we put some of the classifications of the future land use districts, just for the background information purposes. The fifth eligibility criteria is the economic impact, and the standard requires that the proposed development shall not result in unreasonable negative economic impact on surrounding properties. At conceptual review, it's very difficult to determine the economic impact, because things are still fluid, and we don't have the engineering details on the plan, the setbacks, the specific landscaping to really see what the full impact will be. And again, because the traffic impact study still needs to be updated, we don't have the full review of that yet. However, what we have is a fiscal impact analysis that was... However, what we have is a fiscal impact analysis that was included with the application by the applicant. And a fiscal impact analysis is required at conceptual review. And we've reviewed the fiscal impact analysis, and there's a couple of items that were a little out of date that we updated in our own fiscal impact analysis just to move that forward a little bit. Those were the current millage rates and the most recent budget, so that we have those current numbers. At the very end of our review letter, we have an attachment of a spreadsheet of our fiscal impact analysis. Some of our calculations are very close with the applicant's. So once we're in agreement on most of the inputs in terms of the numbers, what we'd like to do is share them with the school district so that they can do their analysis and we can figure out the budget impact on the local schools. But until then, the summary of our fiscal impact analysis is as follows. And this includes the whole development and all uses in the proposed development based on the plan submitted. First, the general fund, it's an impact of negative 26,363. On the library operating fund, it's a positive impact of 38,451. The police fund, a positive impact of 187,554. The fire operating fund, a positive impact of 62,353. And the fire debt fund, a positive impact of 36,867. And as any of the changes take place, if there are any changes with the proposal, we'll update the fiscal impact analysis to make sure that that remains current. And finally, with the fiscal impact, it doesn't take into account any one-time fees or TAP fees or building department fees. Those could be calculated separately. This was just looking at an annual basis in terms of tax revenues received. The next eligibility criteria is the provision for usable open space. The zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 20% of the gross area, which would be 52.88 acres. The open space plan calculates 129.4 acres, which is 51.88%. And although the minimum open space is satisfied, we recommend that the amenities in open space plans show the wetland areas and exclude any ineligible areas from that site. We also recommend that the plans include a more detailed breakdown of the open space areas that will not be owned by the association to determine if those areas are eligible as open space. The next eligibility criteria is the preservation of natural features. As we previously stated, the proposed development preserves 12 acres of the existing Apple Orchard along with the existing cider mill, which is proposed to be preserved and rehabilitated as an orchard store. There is some rolling topography in many areas of the site, but there's not a grading plan, so we can't make a finding on the impact on that natural feature until that topography and engineering is done. There are some wetland areas on the site, and the wetland area impact is unknown at this time, but the development would have to comply with the 25-foot minimum setbacks from wetlands. And then finally, most, if not all, of the subject parcels are exempt from the tree protection ordinance because many are agricultural parcels that were identified as exempt from that ordinance. But nevertheless, the development would be required to comply with all the landscaping requirements of the zoning ordinance. And the final eligibility criteria is the unified control of the development. This is met except for one parcel. Parcel 21-07-200-032 was included in the conceptual plans, but was not included in the application, so the applicant must include this parcel in the application as well as the deed. The last part of the letter will get into some of the design standards, and at conceptual review, there's only so much that we can look at in terms of the design, but we can make findings on a few of them. The first is permitted uses. The predominant use of the site is residential with a mix of single-family, senior active living, and attached residential products. There is more information required for the non-residential uses, including the proposed ownership and any use restrictions. And although the non-residential uses of the site are less than 20%, we do have some concerns regarding the compatibility of the non-residential uses with some of the surrounding properties, specifically in the northeast part of the site where the retail and office will abut residential uses. Regarding the project density, the overall density of the residential uses in a plan development are allowed to exceed that allowed by the underlying zoning district according to the ordinance. And it has to relate to a parallel plan and meeting the density criteria of the zoning ordinance. The applicant's parallel plan shows 195 units, and with that parallel plan, we did identify six units, or I'm sorry, six issues that we had with the plan that have to be addressed. The first is that the parallel plan should include a typical residential lot layout with the setbacks. The second issue is that the single-family residential A should be noted on the plans as the underlying future land use district. The third item is that the parallel plan should include a list of lot areas and widths. The fourth item is that the residential lots or building envelopes should be aligned so as to prevent oncoming headlight glare in accordance with the subdivision ordinance. The fifth issue is that the wetland areas must be excluded from lots. And finally, the cul-de-sac for lots 1 through 5 on the parallel plan is longer than 660 feet, which is the maximum length permitted for the subdivision ordinance. In calculating the densities, Section 7.03(c) of the zoning ordinance allows the board to increase the density by a maximum of 5% and also consider an increase in density above 5% if there are substantial benefits to the users and the community as a whole and the project results in design excellence. Such density factors include major road improvements that benefit the entire township, preservation of rural view sheds, provision of open space around the perimeter, preservation of natural habitat and trees, preservation of topography, lot layout, and several other factors that are listed in a table in Section 7.03(c). The conceptual plan proposes 579 dwelling units on 249.4 net acres for a proposed project density of 2.32 units per acre. Based on the parallel plan of 195 units, the proposed density of 579 units is 197% higher than the density on the parallel plan. The proposed residential density of 2.32 units per acre is similar to the master plan future land use classification of single-family residential C, which is a density of between 2 and 2 1/2 units per acre and corresponds to the R0.5 zoning district. The last few items of the design standards are that the minimum setbacks of the plan development must be included on the plans. The details have to be shown that they meet the requirements. Next, the 10-foot-wide bicycle lanes must be shown along all frontages of the major roads. And finally, the landscaping has to be included. We recommend showing the perimeter landscaping on the conceptual review. So in conclusion, based on the comments from the planning commission at its February 6, 2019 meeting, as well as items noted in this letter, we recommend that the conceptual plan application be revised to include the following information and resubmitted for additional conceptual review by the planning commission and the township board. First, that a general feasibility of the realignment be determined of the road and that the traffic impact study be revised according to GHD's recommendation. Because the realignment of Kent Lake Road relates directly to the master plan policies on density, the planning commission and township board can have a more meaningful discussion on the project density once this additional traffic impact information is submitted and reviewed. Second, that the applicant include parcel 21-07-200-032 in the application and provide the deed. Third, that the parallel plan be revised to address the six issues previously noted in this letter. Fourth, that the perimeter and frontage setbacks be labeled and, if necessary, widened to meet the zoning ordinance requirements. And finally, fifth, that additional detail on perimeter landscaping and screening be provided. Finally, by including the required information on the plan, the planning commission and township board can provide more substantive comments on the project density, uses, and layout prior to the preparation of the preliminary plan by the applicant. That concludes our review, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, Patrick, thank you very much. That was a very detailed review. Any questions for Patrick before we move on? Not this time? All right, Leslie, you have something you want to add to this?
Yes. I'd like to reference our February 26 review letter, which is in your packet this evening. Item number one, an off-site sanitary sewer extension will be required for the project. It appears that the intent is to utilize two onsite pump stations, which will discharge to gravity sewers and ultimately to township pump station number one, which is to the north. Please note that this is not in conformance with the recently updated and adopted sanitary sewer master plan. The master plan allows for a portion of the Irwin Orchard, which is parcel that ends in dash 035, to be serviced to the north, but does not allow for all of the parcel or the parcel commonly referred to as the TAP parcel, which ends in dash 004, to be serviced to the north. Please see the attached sewer master plan map, which is in your packet tonight. Public water main is available to the subject property by way of an existing 16-inch township main. During the preliminary PD process, we will do a water cat analysis to ensure that the township system could handle the demands. We did run a very conceptual layout and does not appear to have any issues, but the preliminary PD is the step that the significant amount of engineering detail would be added to the plan. It appears that the stormwater from the north half of the proposed development will drain to the north and discharge into an existing wetland system. Again, as part of the preliminary PD submittal, an analysis of the downstream effects of additional runoff generated by the development will need to be provided, including the downstream culvert capacities. Stormwater from the southerly portions of the proposed development are proposed to either outlet to existing public roads or to existing low areas, which may not have an apparent outlet. This will need to be investigated as part of the preliminary PD submittal. Regarding the discharge of stormwater to existing public roads, we would encourage the applicant to gain conceptual approval from the road commission for Oakland County for these discharges very early in the PD process. Stormwater detention and retention-based calculations have not yet been provided and will be reviewed in detail during the preliminary PD submittal. There is not enough information present to complete a review. Please note that CES could not review the parallel plan for conformance with the stormwater sizing requirements. Again, there was not enough detailed information provided. As Patrick Sloan mentioned, we hired GHD to review the traffic impact study, including the model that was prepared by the applicant. They found that the study was lacking specifically in the area of the Cider Mill Village Center, which is about 7 1/2 acres of the proposed project. There was really almost no information provided in the model, therefore, they recommend that the model be modified and resubmitted. Again, as Patrick mentioned, the conceptual approval from the road commission for Oakland County for the realignment of Kent Lake Road shall be provided as part of the preliminary PD submittal. Since the planning commission meeting, since this applicant went before the planning commission, the road commission did issue a letter, which is in your packet. I had sent them a copy of the conceptual plans, basically your packet, to them early in the process for their feedback. Most projects that we see do not have such a significant impact to the roads, which are owned and under the jurisdiction of the road commission for Oakland County. I happened to meet with their traffic engineer, their traffic and safety department this week regarding your Chubb Roads and Martindale Road projects. We discussed this, and really, they're concerned because this conceptual, it's part of the zoning process, it's meant to be very conceptual, but for a road realignment, they need a lot of detail to be able to tell you, first of all, of the, what we call an S curve, if it meets their speed requirements. There isn't any topographic information on the conceptual plan, so they can't confirm site distance. And therefore, both Patrick Sloan and I recommend that the applicant amend the traffic study as well as at least meet and provide detailed information to the road commission for the realignment and then go back through conceptual to the planning commission board. That really concludes our review at this point. Typically, at conceptual, there isn't a lot of detailed engineering information that comes at the next step, but this is a significant part of the project, the road.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit confused. Why had we not went to Oakland County to figure out if that road? I mean, we're going to get to the next step. Are you finished? Any questions for Leslie? Should that have been? Just a question for you. Should that have been a step before we got to the conceptual review?
Well, normally, it isn't. But normally, I shouldn't say normally, but in many projects that we see at the township, there isn't this significant improvement proposed on the roads. You might have turning lanes as part of a development, but this is a relocation, it's a big part of the project. So, and they just, this isn't enough for them to go on to give any feedback.
Okay, before you start, we'll go ahead then. Has anyone got any questions for Leslie at this time? Patrick, anyone? Okay, then we'll call the applicant up.
I was only, it sounds like there may be working. Are they working?
I think they are.
Okay. So, Brian Wenzel from Atwell, I was only going to address the last question through the presentation, but to your point, we actually did meet with the road commission. We met with them twice. In fact, if you read, if it's the latest letter in their package, I haven't seen their package, you'll read the letter and acknowledge the fact that we actually did meet with them. We met with the engineering division. We didn't meet with the leadership aspect of it because of the conceptual nature. So this wasn't brought to you without any concept and without any ability to understand design speed and radius, both vertical and horizontal. So actually, we did go through that process. Absolutely, they have the right to go through an extended process, an extended engineering process, both the township and the road commission, but we didn't present anything that we didn't feel like, after discussing with engineers from the road commission, something that couldn't be ultimately approved or ultimately approved in a format that's similar to what you see today.
Okay. All right, well, that being said, no one else has any other questions. Let's move on to the applicant's presentation.
All right, let me, Leslie, I assume I can just plug this in?
Uh, yeah.
Maybe. Good evening, everybody. Howard Fingerood. It's good to see everybody today, and I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you on this conceptual basis to talk about what we would like to propose and get feedback from, we got feedback from the planning commission, and we look forward to the feedback, positive and negative, from the board as well. We think this is a, I think it's a very interesting project. We think it's a great project, and again, we look forward to discussing it with you. The project team, okay? I've been in front of you a number of times. I'm Howard Fingerood with the Cider Mill Village Group. And with me, I have Brian Wenzel from Atwell. He's the president of Atwell, the engineers and planners. We, in addition, we hired a planning firm, RBI, out of Texas, that works on a lot of village concepts and a lot of architectural concepts. And we studied various villages across the country. We went to various architects. We found one we thought really would, can make a big splash here and do something that's very interesting in the township. And the other part of our team, a very important part of our team, is Bill and Linda Irwin, who have been, obviously, residents of Lyon Township for a long time. Whoops. I'm going to do this right here. So the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to call up Bill, Bill Irwin, and have him say a few things about the project.
If you would, Bill.
We've had this property since 1952, probably longer than most people have lived here and some even more than they've been alive. We worked it. It's very gratifying and humbling to see how the community feels about us. They don't want us to go. They don't want us to go. But Linda, myself, and Bill Emery, we've been doing it for 50-some years. I'd like to retire. We've had other opportunities. BezTech, some of you remember. It was a decent project. It didn't go anywhere. We lingered with that for seven years. Polty came along, and that was a bit of a nightmare. These people have showed up. They've tried to work with us, worked with the community, trying to preserve the orchard, some of it, and the cider mill. And right now, Linda and I are, and Bill are quite happy with what they proposed. We hope it goes. It should be a legacy that people are going to remember us or the orchard for a long, long time.
Thank you. With that, what I want to talk about first, because this is, I've done a number of community developments, okay? Subdivisions, if you will. I love subdivisions. I've done a ton of them all over southeast Michigan. And what I've, and I'm hopefully going to do more in my career of subdivisions. This isn't one of those projects, though, okay? This is really creating a village. And this is something that I've been passionate about for a number of years. We've done one, and we're in the process of building one, actually, in Northville Township, and I'm going to show you that in a future slide and what we've done there and some of the benefits of that. And exploring these things, and again, I've explored it and researched it in different cities and seen what they're doing throughout the U.S. And the trends in planning on this is a mix of housing styles. You can see it right here, a mix of uses. And that's, you know, it's kind of important. People want to, we find that there are people that want to live in areas where there are a little bit of mix of uses as opposed to just, say, single-family homes or just multifamily homes. Something that's pedestrian-focused, you hear a lot about this. In fact, there's a lot of pathways and everything in Lion Township and its requirements with sidewalks and everything else. So, obviously, everybody would agree that a pedestrian-focused community is something that generally is accepted as important. And we tie this all together with something we call placemaking, where you could essentially, or potentially, work, shop, live, and play all in one area. And whenever we do a project, traffic is always a big concern. And there's always going to be some additional traffic when you have, you know, new houses, new play areas. But when you focus on a village where somebody could go and they can live there, they can recreate there, they could shop there, that actually reduces some of the traffic, okay? So, they can do a certain amount within the village. Obviously, they're all going to have cars and going to drive, and there'll be some traffic there, of course, probably some additional traffic. But the concept is you can do certain things within one place. And we find that across the country, this is becoming more and more popular. I want to show you, this is one, in fact, this is a project that Brian and I had done in Northville. This is the old Scott Correctional Facility on Five Mile and Back. So, we tore down the prison. And in its place, this is 50 acres surrounded by a township park. We put in 200 for-sale homes. There's about 110, 120 single-family homes and about 70 townhomes. The single families are here, the townhomes are here, and we put a central park in there. And it's a two, three-acre central park where there's fountains and there's walking paths. There's green space to throw a frisbee around. As part of this, and this was a mixed-use development, there is a commercial component to this. And we're not proposing anything like this here in Lion Township. I just want to give you an idea of something that's going on down the block. This is about 100,000 square feet of commercial. In that, we have a grocery store, we have a hotel. I have 20,000 feet of inline, a restaurant, and some little neighborhood office. So, we put that all together along with 300 lost-style apartments. So, when this is all built, and the single family that towns are being built right now, the commercials coming out of ground this summer, and when this is completed, you're going to have a pedestrian-friendly village where people living in the homes can walk to the shops, can walk to the restaurants. The hotel, the patrons of the hotel will have a restaurant to walk to, some retail to walk to. And in this case, what we did was we, the township reserved the park area for like 10 or 12 weekends a year, or 10 weekends a year, I think. And they can do farmers' markets, they can do art fairs, and they can do a variety of things. So, it was something that provided community benefit for all of Northville Township. And this project is, if you've talked to the township there, they love the concept. So, when we started out with Cider Mill Village, we said, okay, what are we trying to achieve? What are the project goals? So, the first, and this is very important, and Bill touched on this, is the preservation of the orchard heritage. I know that there have been proposals on this property in the past, and I don't believe any of them had proposed to keep the heritage. You know, we want to keep the cider mill and a portion, albeit a smaller portion of the orchard itself, where you can still do your U-Pick, but the real key here is the cider mill itself and the store to buy cider and to buy donuts will go on and hopefully in perpetuity. Two, we want to provide a diversity of housing. And we'll go into that in the presentation. But we have products for all different, all different demographics, whether it's a small family, whether it's a big family, whether it's empty nesters, whether it's couples. There's different products for what people desire to have. Preservation of open space. In this, there's 250 acres. So, this is a big, this is a big parcel of land or a combination of parcels of land. It's a big parcel of land. It's 250 acres. And we prefer, I believe, the PUD ordinance requires like 20% open space. I think we have close to 40% or 50% open space. We'll get into the specifics of that as we go on. So, open space was a big thing. And again, pedestrian-friendly. The creation of a village center. And that's important in the village. You want to be able to go to a place and meet people and hang out and do the things that we're going to propose in the village center. And we'll go through those types of things, like potentially a farmer's market. Again, a restaurant next to the cider mill. Items of that nature. And then lastly, and I know Mr. Sloan touched on this, is the community benefits. And we'll go through them in detail. But the two that really come to mind and I want to talk about is, one, the road fixing the, you know, the connection of basically Pontiac Trail up to the intersection of 96. And then, two, again, the preservation of the orchard. And I think those two, while we have other community benefits, I don't think those two kind of drive home what we're trying to achieve overall, big picture. So, those are our goals. We'll walk through the project. And then we'll come back and we'll say, okay, how did we hit those goals? So, that's kind of the nature of our presentation tonight. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian, who's going to look at this and analyze it relative to both your zoning ordinance and your master plan.
This is some of the water. You were coughing.
Sorry.
Oh, you got it.
That's okay, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian Wenzel from Atwell has said we're here to represent the project. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for everybody showing up. It couldn't be any more important than for us to get input from all parties that are interested here. So, as Howard said, we have a site. We've talked about this a lot. In fact, I think firstly, everybody, but perhaps the supervisor, acknowledged they live next to, adjacent to, or close to this. So, everyone is aware of the site. So, I won't spend too much time other than to acknowledge, obviously, what we're talking about is one of the key areas here is, of course, this jog in this area right here on the Kent Lake, Silver Lake, Pontiac Trail side is the township plan, as Mr. Sloan had pointed out. It's one of the more significant transportation corridors in the township. It's actually one of the more dangerous corridors in the township if you look at recorded accidents. And of course, with the township transportation plan and what the Road Commission has acknowledged is part of that is related to the offsetting intersection and the amount of traffic that's there. So, we, before we even started this and before Howard came to us and said, you know, I want to do X and Y and Z, we said, okay. I think one of the things we have to do is first acknowledge what the township, you know, what the parcel, you know, gives to us. And we spent a lot of time looking at that, and we can talk about that as needed. But one of the things that was obviously critical to us is understanding what the township wanted to see here and the way the township, of course, communicates that information is a series of things in terms of their zoning ordinance and their master plan. I won't spend a tremendous amount of time focused on that because I think, again, Mr. Sloan's report and Mr. Watt's report did a great job of doing that. But I would highlight a couple of things. There was a 2012 master plan. It was later amended in 2015. And is, was already said is that master plan acknowledged this particular area as being a significant area of the township. And one of the things that was acknowledged is that, is that perhaps, and it's certainly not something that is obligated or guaranteed, but perhaps, given the particular area around in this, these properties and the transportation, I'm not quoting, "Transportation difficulties are compounded by the offset of Kent Lake Road and Pontiac Trail, so a continuous route to I-96 is lacking." Based on these considerations, the planning commission concluded be prudent to designate the undeveloped lands a single-family residential A, which, of course, was already reported and is accurate. Recognizing, I'm continuing on, that reevaluation of this designation may, may be in order if solutions to the road inadequacies were implemented, which goes back to the recommendation that we already heard earlier today, is that, in fact, if the township and the Road Commission agreed that perhaps what was proposed, or eventually what is proposed, adequately addresses the road issues here is that, in fact, perhaps the consideration of density and future land use could be reconsidered based upon addressing those road inadequacies. It goes on to say further, by the way, "Separate from the concept of addressing those is that single-family residential B development could be considered for housing design for empty nesters, recognizing the lower traffic volumes generated by such housing." So, those sort of go hand in hand. If you solve the traffic problems, maybe, maybe you could do something more here than what we call single-family residential A, which is basically one unit an acre. And in fact, perhaps if you, then if you didn't address that, and it doesn't really set an upper limit or a lower limit on that, if, in fact, you did something related to senior housing, and then it does specifically say, "Single-family residential B", which is basically, according to the master plan, two units an acre or less, could be considered because those particular uses are less than what would be called for traditional development. So, we saw that, and of course, eventually, as you'll see in the plan, that we, in fact, addressed both those things. A proposal that would address some of the road inadequacies in the area and a significant portion of the density that's related to either active adult or something other than what we call traditional, single-family residential, both of which, which have an impact that are lessened on water, sewer, schools, roads, and otherwise. So, continuing on, existing zoning that's already been talked about. So, that certainly makes sense. And then I would only highlight the fact that we chose the planned development potential designation for the particular property because it does talk about a lot of things. In fact, it does talk about a couple of things where, in fact, that if the existing underlying zoning district is residential, non-residential uses may be permitted as part of the planned development provided such non-residential uses occupy a maximum of 20% of the building acreage. Mr. Sloan's report already addresses the fact we're less than 20%. But the point of it is, is that we didn't, we didn't suddenly come up with a concept that we said, let's ignore the zoning ordinance out of, you know, ad hoc. We actually read it, understood it, and thought that perhaps with the appropriate design excellence that's required under PUD, and I'm not walking away from that, that perhaps there may be something other than residential that would be potentially appropriate for this. And so, there is obviously a series of considerations and a series of things that need to happen. Further goes on to the PUD ordinance to say, "The overall density of residential uses within a planned development should be based on the density that could be achieved with the underlying zoning." And obviously, it references parallel plans. And we've talked about the parallel plans, and I agree with all concepts that have been said. And so, we have no debate with that. However, it goes on to say, "The particular design characteristics of a planned development may warrant, may warrant, an increase or decrease in the number of dwelling units above or below the number shown on the parallel plan. The township board, found in view by the planning commission, may grant an increase of density upon finding that the planned development exhibits design excellence and would result in substantial benefit to the future residents and the community as a whole." So, there's the target we have to hit. There's the ceiling we're at. That if, in fact, we're going to come here and propose something that would be above the parallel plan, and clearly, we're proposing something above the parallel plan, we have a threshold to hit. Design excellence and substantial benefit to both the future residents of the project and the community as a whole. And in fact, there's a table on the organization that's already been referenced. It talks about some of the things that would be considered. And those things, you know, no particular stuff, but obviously applies here. Protection of land, funding of improvements in parks, donation of land for parks, paving or making substantial improvements to or funding of improvements to township roads, construction and or donation of community buildings and or land for such buildings, preservation of rural view sheds, reclaimation or reuse of land, multi-use trails, preservation of historic farms, barns, or other buildings that preserve the history of Lion Township. And so, we took those things to heart because you took them to heart. It was put in there, it was written down, and it was sent out and was ultimately approved. And so, that became important, and those are a lot of the drivers to what you ultimately see in front of that. So, that became the sort of playbook, if you will. And so, I won't belabor this too much. But then we went back, as Howard said, and he was really imperative on us to work with, to work with the Planning and Landscape Architecture Company out of Texas and others and said, okay, tell us, give us, instead of starting to put pen to paper, give us some ideas, give us some images, give us some concepts. And so, one of the things we want to talk about, you know, is existing conditions. Obviously, this is primarily agricultural use. Irwin's does have some sort of commercial use given that, you know, the cider mill and those operations. The Heron Parcel obviously was a previous horse boarding use. Now, it's really a blighted property on the township. And we're really at the interface of suburbanization. You see that because you see the proximity of the freeway interchange. You see the traffic. You see the drugstore. So, you're in this, you're in this interface where you're trying to deal and appropriately address the concept of, you know, we're in a, certainly not a suburban area, but becoming a suburban area. As Howard already mentioned, one of the key factors of this is housing diversity. You know, one of the most, one of the things that defines successful communities across the country is this concept of housing diversity. And this really goes to, and Lion Township is probably a great example, where somebody bought their home 30 years ago and it's relatively affordable. And today, the values increased, and it's tremendous for all people. And that's awesome. But of course, what's happened is, is your kids grew up in a house and they left for school, and now they're coming back. And what they're finding is, is they're not in a position to buy a 100-foot lot in a 3,000-square-foot house at the price in line today. And so, they're literally priced out of the community, the community they want to come back to, the community they grew up in. And in the same instance, you see it with your parents, is that they had it, and they were there before, and now they're in a position where they really don't want to cut an acre yard or snowplow or driveway. And yet, they're forced to leave their church or their doctor or their friends because they're not in a position to continue to have that. So, this mix, and I'm not arguing anything about economics. I'm simply arguing about a mix of housing diversity to allow somebody who wants to get into the market for the first place, somebody who has a family and loves the community and wants to participate at schools, or somebody who's simply aged to a point where they need, they want to downsize to a point. How do you not create a product or a place for them? And that's really what communities are about. And so, this sort of whole mix of housing use is important. Obviously, commercial, Howard talked about that, and the fact that this simply, some of the stuff is walkable, whether it be casual dining, whether it be sort of formal dining, whether it simply be things like art classes. But you want to create that. The event and outdoor spaces, this is very important to this. Public gathering spaces are so critical. Public gathering spaces are so critical to this, and we say, talk a lot about, about that, but having the opportunity to really design those first, instead of letting them ad hoc happen, or maybe not happen, but the ability to design those first is key. You know, one of the things we talked a lot about here, and Howard mentioned it, was the farmer's market, right? There's something about Irwins where they have that, but again, it's sort of across the street, this side of the street, it happens, but let's find a place where we can aggregate that up and not exclude it from the community, but in fact, encourage it in the community. Obviously, entry features, the design features, to sort of set that agriculturally themed aspect. Talked a lot about with the Irwins, talked a lot about legacy. We wanted this to be something that recognized what the community did and what the Irwins did. And so, doing that in a way that's meaningful, and you can design that, whether it be vertical architecture, horizontal architecture, landscape architecture, but be able to do that. So, these are some of the inspirational images. Parks, the thing about, the thing about parks is, unfortunately, a lot of times, right, the for sale, for rent product is designed first, and then what's left, the inefficiency, becomes the parks. And in, and in fact, in this case, it's, it's, it's the opposite. We talked about wanting to do something where we had deliberate parks, and again, go back to the housing diversity aspect. You need children's places, you need active adult places, you need, you need dog parks, you need, you need all of those as a place, and you've got to cohesively integrate them in, and you've got to tie them all in together. So, they became a driver for the design rather than an afterthought. Health and wellness is something that's clearly critical, critical to the township. Talk about trail systems. I think ultimately, we got done here, there's six miles of sidewalks, four miles of trail systems, and, and how you, how you tie all those together is critical. Recreation center, this becomes, this becomes so important, you know, particularly on a, on a, on a project basis. And again, this is about the mix of house. You need, you need, you need, if you're going to create this mix of uses, you need an active adult pool, you need a children's pool, you need to find spaces like sand volleyball and picnic areas where people have a chance to interact with them. And, and again, this is this pedestrian scale aspect, where we're trying to get people out of their cars, out of their backyards, into a place where they're, where they're cooperating and, and interfacing together. And then stormwater retention, you know. I'm an engineer, right? You know, the thing you worry about stormwater retention is you want a big pond, you want to do it. And, and unfortunately, we don't do a great job of that. It's an afterthought, again. And in here, we want to make it, and, and we want to try, at least try and make it something where it's designed first, where we find places where we can, yes, appropriately make sure that we're adequately addressing the stormwater concerns of the township and the drainage commission, but in the same instance, integrate those in throughout the design process, so it becomes part of the community. So, you can do things like create overlooks, create opportunities, create wetlands, create educational aspects in team of schools, those types of things. So, I think there's real opportunities here as we go through the process. And obviously, as already been said, Ms. Wallace, is that we're, we're a long way away from all the details, but we, I, I give you these because this is what influenced the concept that brought us to here. And so, this is the plan that was submitted to the township. We'll go through it very quickly because we've talked about a lot of the details already. On the northwest corner, here are the townhome units. There's 88 units, and Howard's going to show you some example product in a second, but there's 88 units of townhomes for sale, obviously intended to hit a particular buyer, this may be first time. There's a series of units right here, the village flats, as they were called apartments earlier, is that there's 192 units here, and again, this is somebody that isn't in a position to buy, but wants to be part of the community. Off to the, off to the, and I want to shoot you in the eye, Leslie, so I apologize. Off to the left here, all of this is the active adult area. The area to the north is what we'll call sort of the more traditional 54 lots, active adult. And then down here is a unique product that comes from Pinnacle by MI, and they're really villas that are, that are separate, detached, but congregated in four-unit complexes that, that are garage-decentric, they're side-loaded, and so you really get a unique-looking product. You, here, in the central part, is you end up with 70-foot lots here, which is really more of the family focus. Off to the southeast is what we call our state lots, 90-foot by 150-foot deep, and they're intended to be, obviously, side-entry, something more for the, for the buyer that's, you know, on their second or third move-up. With the redesign of the S-curve here, this creates, this corner right here is an obvious sort of commercial-focused corner. This is what we'll call the, traveling south to north is the AM side of the road, and so this creates a great little local retail commercial. This is not intended to take away from New Hudson or any other aspect. This is simply intended to support the AM traffic going up to the freeway, and if you think about it, the obvious, you know, those coffee shops or something like that. And then, in this corner particularly here, we were looking for something and recognizing, what has already been said earlier today, but we're looking for something that would be low-intensity, Monday through Friday, it came up the office of municipal use on that aspect. This is all geared around, okay, the village center right here, and this is the part where I think, you know, I think there's something unique. This is a close-up of the village center. That building is the existing cider mill, what we call the general store. This is where if you're waiting in line for donuts and apple cider, that's where you would be. I think there's a parking in front of it now, we've created this green space here. This building, this building, and this building all exist today. This is one of the unique things, and, and, and you can see it, you can see it, if I back this up, you can see here where we've attempted to preserve, and it's clearly not all of the area that's apple orchard, but we wanted to preserve some of the U-Pick orchards. Now, this is not going to be a economic benefactor. No one's going to go, "Great, I have 10 to 20 acres here, I'm going to sell apples." But we did want to, again, allocate areas and places where people could do that, and you'll see in a second, some of the recreational activities that we've got integrated with that. But with, with that, we didn't want to simply come in and go, "Let's just wipe everything out, erase it, and build something new." And that's, that's part of what we talked about when we're really looking to create a unique project. Part of that is incorporating that history, that legacy. Is it more inefficient? Yes. Is it more costly? Yes. All those things are true. But what we're able to do, and potentially, is like, for example, this building is the old Apple Storage Building, or the current Apple Storage Building, I've walked through it, I've been in there, is that this would be a fantastic farmer's market. If you've been over to Europe ever, they really take a lot of those old agriculture buildings, and they put them in a place, they reuse them, and they create in that. So, what we've done is said, "Let's take these three buildings and this fourth one here, and let's reuse them. Going to have to reskin them, going to have to rebuild them, have to bring them up to code." But this is not about eliminating the history of Lyon Township, this is about celebrating the history of Lyon Township. And so, that's part of what that is. And then, the rest of this is simply new hardscape, new softscape, and new buildings that's intended to, to complement that. So, for example, the largest building here is this restaurant building here, and if you think about it, this is really what's happening in the world today. A restaurant, it's going to use, it's going to create hard cider, going to create some, some, you know, wines, and do some things like that. So, this is something where we feel like there's a tremendous opportunity. Everything to the north here is available to the public and intended to be for public. Right now, subject to further discussions and further input from the township planning commission, the board, and the public behind me, is this area here is, is intended for the project basis. And so, here we have community gardens, really more ornamental-type apple orchards. We've got a recreation center, we've got playgrounds, we've got different pools. And so, the difference is, you know, this area is something that would be developed and, and given by the, the, the project sponsors. This area here would be both given by the project sponsors, developer of the project sponsors, and continued to be supported by the project sponsors. And the balance between what's public, what's private is certainly open for discussion. I know I can speak for Howard on this, and that there is no hard line there, but the intent is to create a balance where there's benefit to the community, but there's not a burden to the community in terms of ongoing cost. My last slide then becomes this, and this is just, you know, this goes back to my open space concept, is we really tried, and these are just representative examples. There's neighborhood parks in each one of these unique areas. You know, this is a barn event center where we feel like we can really do something here that would be unique, and this is something that would be open to the community. We've got neighborhood, you know, neighborhood areas here with fitness, we've got dog parks, we've got trail systems that go here, that go throughout here. Obviously, this continues to be the focus in the center, and there's a tremendous, in some areas, a certain amount of open space and view sheds that are there. So, it, it, it's one of those areas, it's one of those, Howard, you have next, it's one of those areas where, you know, we feel like we've put as much time and attention into the open space aspect as we did to the first A-F-R-N aspect, so we wanted to make sure that we, we highlighted that, so.
I'll be real brief in just wrapping this up. I wanted to give you a concept of the architecture because that was what we did to kind of integrate the, this is the active adult residential. Again, if, I brought some of this to the township staff, and we talked about architecture originally, and they say, "Well, what did we see on HGTV? What are the types of things that people like today? What's kind of the new trends?" And this kind of style architecture kind of points that out. These are the active adult villas that are kind of these clusters with the side-entry garages, and when you walk past it and everything, it kind of has a little more of that old-world These would be the homes in the center section of the single-family. Again, it's very similar architecture. Then we have the estate size over on the east side, so basically, you know, larger homes, more side-entry garage in nature there. We have some townhomes up to the north, and again, we probably would tweak this architecture to match it a little bit more towards the other components we showed. And then there's some village flats, and again, these are kind of examples, really to show massing, kind of two-story stuff, but again, it would kind of more mirror the, the other homes. So, while the community benefits, and again, Mr. Sloan pointed them out in our presentation, I'll just go through them really quickly. The, the preservation of the heritage of Irwin Orchards, the relocation and realignment of Kent Lake Road, clean up the existing environmental issue. There's, and we, we've talked about this before, we've talked about this at the planning commission, when you have apple orchards, oftentimes, you have runs of arsenic, and it's very prevalent in southeast Michigan. Back in the 40s and 50s, lead arsenic was used as a pesticide, and the arsenic falls to the ground, and typically, it's in the topsoil within the, the first six inches or so of the ground. The EPA says, "In order to build houses, your level has to be here, and if your level exceeds that, you have to clean it up to that level." So, we've done testing, and this is very common, almost in, I don't want to say all, but many of the developments now, whether it be in Novi and Lyon, in Canton, and we're running into arsenic, and we're cleaning it up. So, we would do that here as well. The creation of the village center, we see as a community benefit. The municipal building was really an offer. It's, I don't know if you needed something, if you had thought about it, if you just want to reserve it for future use, it's just something that we can talk about. Provide funding for a township ladder truck, I understand that that was something that the fire department was looking for, you know, so we want to discuss that. And then, again, 50% plus of open space and miles of, of paths and trails. So, these were the kind of benefits that we're proposing in this development. So, the project goals, and we talked about these. One, preserve the heritage. Two, provide diversity of housing. I think we have five or six different housing products here. Three, the preservation of open space, we kind of, we've, it's founded on that, the creation of village center, and by community benefit. So, those are the things that, those were the goals we started with, we kind of walked through it and showed it in each one of those, how we were trying to achieve those goals. And that, in a nutshell.
Okay, Mr. Sloan. Thank you for that great presentation. That was very informative. So, now I'm going to open this up for the township board to go ahead and discuss what they think about this, and who wants to start this conversation? Any questions for Howard? You want to start?
I've got a few.
You want to go ahead? Go ahead, John.
Sure. My interest is, who's going to own the commercial? Who's going to own the orchard? How's that going to, how are you going to work that? All those buildings?
You know, some of it's up for discussion. Clearly, the cider mill itself is going to be privately owned, and there'll probably be a few ancillary buildings associated with the cider mill that will be privately owned. We have a potential operator who, he's not in Michigan right now, but he owns a variety, or he owns a number of cider mills, and he's interested in opening up this one here. So, I think he would do that and a restaurant, and then as this project progresses and we have discussion, we could talk about whether, I don't know if the township wants to own anything, or whether things would be privately held.
Okay, with, I, well, the cider mill you answered, maintaining this orchard, there's going to be noise and odor as they spray the trees, take care of that. People that live right on that lane are not going to like that.
You're talking about the 10-acre U-Pick? That will be, that will be owned by the cider mill?
But I'm saying, it's got to be maintained, it's got to be sprayed, and that's, your neighbors are not going to like that, guaranteed. The noise and the fumes and everything involved, that's an issue. And you do plan U-Pick, I, I don't think there's nearly enough parking, based on what I've seen, for the U-Pick. And again, the question came up about the buildings you're rehabilitating, you'd probably need at least one of them strictly for storage for the maintenance gear. You do not plan, you just have a trail shown so far back to the 10-acre orchard, so you wouldn't plan wagons like had been used, I would assume.
You know, we haven't really gotten that far into the details.
Okay, and you explained the amenities, a question I had, they're basically for The thing that I would be cautious of is when the, what you, what you define as owned by the homeowners association, because we've had two instances, I'm aware of, but that became a real big issue. People were paying for amenity they never used, they didn't want that. And one got out of the deal, and the other one's trying very hard. I guess I can talk about the roads that I, I think that's a great deal, the S-curve, you know, if you can get that road in. But I don't know what the plans are, but I think all the roads fronting all this should be minimum of three lanes, not a minimum, I think they should be three lanes in front of the property. They settle these hell lanes. You mentioned sidewalks, you have them planned. And I'm just curious on the, it would be the northeast section, you show a store there. What kind of size is it? Is it a grocery store? Is it a party store?
I would say it's neighborhood, so, you know, I can, we can see a, a coffee shop, again, it's the morning drive.
Right.
Okay, so, may have coffee, you may, in other neighborhood things, pizza, nail salon, you know, small neighborhood retail.
You've kind of addressed it, and I, I was wondering if the retail there would influence or impact the New Hudson retail that we're striving for?
Yeah.
And nothing, no major grocery stores or?
No, nothing like that.
Although, they probably do Waller. That's the only option at Walmart right now. I see an event center, rec center, village center, these are all, they're not clearly defined, but they're all community-type places.
I'm sorry, what was?
It was the, the rec center, village center, and an event center.
Right.
Not clear- Not clearly defined yet, but.
Right. You know, clearly there was a line that Brian talked about, where below the line, south of the line, where amenities at the HOA would have above the line, where it's for the general community. We're going to have to talk about what would be private and what would be public. Publicly owned and potentially privately owned.
In addition to the orchard preservation, I know a lot of people have asked, why don't we have a Trader Joe's or a Mirror Bread? And this kind of density would definitely help that. I know the first thing they look for is stuff down. And I guess it concludes for the moment what I have, but I do want to mention, I liked Stefan Huffman on the planning commission, his comment about, this is probably the soundest urban planning design community he has ever seen. This is a home run and addresses every aspect of the location. The way it was designed decimates the whole number into livable, walkable, culturally relevant, and overwhelms the density. And I, I don't really disagree with him on that. Density's obviously an issue, it will be, but I think there's a lot of good that I see in this plan.
Thank you.
Can I just, before we go on, can I piggyback? One thing, when you, when you said the cider mill would be a third party, are you actually talking about the sale of that, somehow selling that to a third party?
Yes.
And then if, if, what kind of plan, because it is in the center of your village space, what kind of plan, wouldn't we have, just to make sure that that would never close, if that guy went under, having that vacant in the middle of that and all the trees in the back that are going to have to be taken care of, I mean, that's a problem, I think. So I'm a little concerned about that.
Yeah, I think we talked about, you know, deed restricting that to be the, you know, to preserve it.
So deed restriction would mean the community would have to pick that up? You're talking deed restricted to the community that, around it?
No, no, the property itself would be restricted to that use.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying if it went under, if the guy couldn't afford to keep it afloat.
Then he could, you know, potentially sell it to somebody else.
But I'm just saying, if no one wanted it, or there wasn't any money involved, then it becomes a kind of an eyesore in the middle of the whole project, and a little concerned about that. But anyway, I was just, go ahead, Michelle, if you had something to go for.
Well, it's pretty, pretty well done, yeah.
Well, I thought that's what you said, you were finished.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I thought you called me.
Oh, that's all right. Well, my big thing was we've been contacted by a lot of residents, and I really feel for them that their properties abut this. And I know everybody, you know, you're looking at an empty lot and you're hoping it's going to stay that way forever, but when you do abut properties like this, I mean, you can't put office there. I mean, and I guess maybe you're just trying to save the woods in the preservation area, or that's just not a buildable spot. But having that office or municipal use that, you know, we don't have the people to maintain that, so I'm not sure what that would be. You know, that's not on our agenda, but maybe something in the future, someone else knew something. But right now, the road to me would be the real reason or the plus for this community, but there's no way I could ever support 197% density. No way. I mean, and then again, like I said, my big concern is for the residents who surround, and they really just, you know, it's just a shame that if they're a bigger lot, especially something like Deer Creek down here, that they would be looking at someone else's backyard very close together. So maybe taking some away or a lot of that density away, you would increase these lots on the edges that abut these people's property, that they don't have to look at something that, you know, small, and they're used to seeing open space. I really do like the little neighborhood park up at the top, the townhomes, because I do agree that our kids really can't afford to live here, and that might be a nice starter for some. I'm not sure how, like John said, how the orchard will keep up or a little store. It sounds great at first, and I'm sure it'll, you know, someone will want to come in, but that's just really hard, I think, to maintain. And again, if it isn't maintained, what is it going to turn into? Deed restricted. So that's really all I have.
Okay. You know, I, I, I look at a lot of these projects that have come through for the Irwins Orchards. There's been a few, a number of them that's come through. I will give you credit for one thing. I think you've listened to a lot of the, a lot of the stuff going on out there. When I say that, I'm talking about preserving the orchard, and I see you've done that. I know that you've done homework, listening to the board where they like pathways, and you've put a lot of pathways in and the diversity of the whole. One thing I don't think you really got was the density situation. I really think that a lot of the project, being as dense as it is, is the hard to swallow. And I, I look at density in a couple of different ways. I look at density not only in the number of homes, but in the population growth. I look at density as, you may have 570 homes on 260 acres, but that creates 1,500 more people possibly in the population, several, several cars, several more cars, to an infrastructure that's already struggling. And I do agree, and that's not just to say also the schools are busting at the seams, and we have, we have a lot of population that would be put in the schools by this project. I think it's very forward thinking. Don't get me wrong, I'm not cutting you down on this. I'm not saying it's a bad design, and I think it would be, it would be something that the township could probably be proud of. But where I do see the problem is I don't think the infrastructure's there. By just simply changing the one piece of road, I don't see the infrastructure hanging onto this. And I know, I know you talk about, where you say, you know, well, everybody's going to be stuck, you know, a lot of them will stay in the project, they'll walk around, they won't leave. But we know that. We drive in Michigan, you know, we get in our cars, and we like to go places, and I agree, some of them would stay in, but we also drive. And I think, I think having it so dense with so many homes on such a few acres is, like I say, a multiple effect. And that's where it's hard for me a little bit. I do, I think it's, it's a great product. I think it looks really nice, and I do think there's some hurdles for you here, and just...
Can I just, let's say two things about density and traffic. First thing is if you're going to put dense, and I'm not saying this is dense, but if you're going to put dense, you want to put it kind of on the edge of the township from your perspective, because it's not like 10-mile road where you've got to drive through the township to go up to 96, or if you're shooting down to eight-mile road or something. Okay, this is right near the expressway interchange, so a lot of the traffic goes a quarter, half-mile, and they're out. So they're not, all this traffic's not driving through the township. That's one. To make a comparison on some of the other villages that have been done recently, you take Cherry Hill Village, which is in Canton, which is not ideally located, right, because you've got to drive to get there. It's not, you know, you're not, you're driving to township to get there, that's like six to eight units an acre, okay? What I did in Northville, again, that was close to the M14, it was about a half-mile, quarter-mile, half-mile from the M14 interchange. That was 11 units an acre, okay? This scene is just over two an acre, which generally speaking, most places where we develop in southeast Michigan, two an acre isn't considered dense. Obviously in Lyon Township where you do mostly 100-foot lots or 100-foot zoning, two an acre seems like a lot. If you look at the neighboring areas, two an acre is kind of your low to mid-density, not, not high-density.
But I still go back to the, to the schools busting at the seams and the roads, even though, you know, I mean, it's a very rural area still. This is my, I'll go ahead.
That's a, that's a great comment, and maybe we should have highlighted this more. If you look at the product mix that we're talking about, roughly a third of those are in the village lofts, and roughly a third of those are in the active adult between the two products. So, and I'm using round numbers, we can look them up and do the math, but somewhere between 50% and two-thirds of the sites are what we'll call an active adult or a village loft. I'm ignoring the townhomes at the moment, and I could even argue that. But there's a reason for that, because those buyers or those users tend to, tend to be a particular demographic where they either have, they haven't had, haven't had kids yet, or they're past the kid age. So it decreases the demand as well. Now, it doesn't make it zero, I'm not saying that, but it decreases the demand. Same thing with water sewer, same thing with traffic, same thing, more important, peak hour traffic. So if you really get into it, in fact, your master plan actually recognizes this, is that the difference between peak hour traffic for an active adult user versus a more traditional suburban buyer is really significant. So I'm not saying it's not zero, but if you're going, to Howard's point, couple the proximity to, to infrastructure and freeway interchanges, and look at the actual mix of the uses, not just focus on the total number of units, and I understand the density concept, I get it completely, but you really look at the mix of it, there, we weren't random in that. We weren't trying to do that. We were trying to recognize, that we're trying to de-emphasize and create something that didn't strain the infrastructure as much as what a traditional development would do in other parts of the township. And so you're not wrong, but, but I would simply ask you to consider the aspect that the users of this are probably different users than the traditional, I bought a 3,000-square-foot house. That's my point.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Yep. I, this is the second time I've seen this plan, because I'm the liaison for the planning commission. So I'm going to kind of go over again what I stated in the planning commission. And the first thing is, this is, this is one of our gateways to our community. So anything that's going to go there, I think, should be and could be something very special. And I understand the heritage for the Irwins, and with a thank you, I'd like to thank the Irwin family, because I've lived there 31 years, and I love the orchard, and I loved going to get donuts, and I took my kids there and my grandkids there. So I just want to say that, I mean, and I also want to send my condolences, because Uncle Ed just passed away recently, and I always enjoyed chatting with him when he came to pay his taxes. But with that being said, as I stated in the planning commission, I was absolutely shocked by the density. And being with the township for 29 years and sitting on the board, I have never come across 197% density. So Howard, as I stated then, that has to change. And my suggestion was even maybe not come to the township board and try to come in with something that's realistic, but that's up to you. I don't see the need for municipal land right now for us, because we also own a very large chunk of property on Milford Road. We have put that aside for either more municipal offices, or maybe our library would go there, or whatever, we need a DPW. So we have quite a significant piece of property also. I don't think that spot is appropriate for apartments. I do like some of the mixed use. I do like a little bit of, like as Michelle mentioned, some different product that if you were going to have a village center, it needs to support that, vice versa. I, I love the product. It's, it's right up my alley. If anybody has ever been to my house or seen my house, I love that HGTV-looking houses. I think it's what people are more liking, that, the feedback that we get at the township. I see the road and the ladder truck as a definite bonus, or a density bonus. The rest of it, the village would support itself. It would be good for the community, but again, I don't see enough parking. I'm concerned that the school, Kent Lake School, would need a traffic light added. If you're going to add any kind of density, any, I, I would think you would have to have a light, because it's only two lanes there, and you know, or they do have a passing light, I take that back. But still, that, that's a lot of parents taking their kids to school. And they are coming from different parts of the township for that. Density is, is my biggest issue, and I, you've got to address it, so those are my comments.
I would agree with everything that's been said. I had a question. One thing that was mentioned, obviously, and I had some of the questions that John Hicks had asked about ownership going forward, because, you know, again, there are neighborhoods that don't want the things that were sought initially by the developer, and they're more of an anchor on the community as opposed to, yeah, Pinehurst is one I'm thinking of, the Peters Farm, which, they're nice buildings and everything, but I don't know that anybody, I've got friends that live there, and they don't even know that they own it, and no one uses it, and they want to divest of that property. So then what? And I guess that's the question for the, I mean, we can deed restrict it, but in 10 years or 20 years, a person would be standing at this podium, asking to be let out of these deed restrictions to build more houses, because that's what he's surrounded with. I mean, that, that would, that is exactly what would happen. There's no question in my mind. And, you know, ag is a necessary use, but it's not a harmonious use with this kind of density around it. I mean, I can imagine it would be unfortunate, really. The question I have for Patrick, is the orchard factored into the open space, the orchard land, the acreage?
It is.
So how could you sell it to someone who's going to run a business there, and we still count it as open space? I mean, I think the density number would have to be looked at again, because it's not just open space to be enjoyed, it's someone's business, and it's being used for something other than, you know, a park. And so it's 10 acres, 12 acres, I mean, that, that...
I think it's part and parcel to the whole, but the reality is you need 20%, we provided over 50%, so if you want to take out 10 acres and...
I'm just trying, I'm just calling out, you know.
The part and parcel of the whole development.
Sure. And I think, you know, obviously, I think your argument to me, and I mean, there's a lot of things that, that have yet to be, this is conceptual, we're talking in broad terms, we're not getting any real specific, but I think to me, the question becomes, you know, the density now is way out into outer space compared to what the master plan and the current zoning would call for. I know you're, it's less than 11 acres, it's less than six, or six units an acre, less than 11 units an acre. If you told me you were getting rid of a prison, I'd probably be more flexible than getting rid of, you know, something that's beloved by a community, and, you know, back road carries a lot of traffic, and, you know. Anyway, so I get it, you know, I mean, I'm guessing if Northville probably would have given you twice the density to get rid of what you got rid of, and I, I think it's a good thing for them, that, that's great. I think the, at the crux of this discussion is, will the benefits that you're offering, and, I mean, the biggest one, the biggest ticket item, that's a seven-figure dollar amount, I don't know how many millions it's going to cost, but at least a couple of million dollars for you to move that road. And the road commission hasn't said they're going to let you, or what the requirements are going to be, you have no idea what the soil conditions are like, I mean, it might not even be feasible. It might not. I mean, it's just fair to say that. So the plan, your plan may change as a result of further study of this. And so to me, you're saying, would I be willing to accept that road as the one factor that solves all the problems for traffic that would allow me to then say, single-family A is out the window, and I would accept, accept single-family B, which is still two units an acre, not 2.3 units an acre, or whatever the ultimate density is, because apparel plans haven't exactly slotted in, we're not exactly sure where we're at density-wise. And that's the question. And, you know, some part of this community has to stay rural and has to follow the master plan. I mean, 10-mile is, is probably, that ship has sailed, and, and that's, that's fine, it's, it's, that's what 10-mile is. And I understand your point about it's, this is, you know, the proximity to the highway, but we're just fixing one segment of road, and I feel like the same argument happens with the extension of M5. Yeah, there's a huge problem for Commerce Township in M5 right now, and when they fix that and they get it to the north of Commerce Township, then it's a huge problem for White Lake. And then when they fix that and they move it further to the north, it's a huge problem for Springfield. So we're potentially moving a traffic problem, we're not solving all of the traffic problems. I think a traffic light, which the township has the funds to pay for, could solve a lot of the traffic problems at that intersection as well, because it's, it means warrants for a light now, and I think we could, for a couple hundred thousand dollars, fix that intersection without having to realign the road. So the road isn't a necessity, although it's a nice benefit. You know, I'm not going to ask you what your contribution is for the fire truck yet, it's a million-dollar piece of equipment. We don't have one, you know, it would be nice to have it. I think, you know, some of my, some of my concerns also on kind of the arrangement, I do think that the, what you're, the office buildings that everyone has kind of called up, they back up to probably a dozen or so people, and those are maybe two-story buildings that are going to be right behind... two-story buildings that are gonna be right behind, and they're really wedged in there too on the plan, right behind these, these folks. So I don't know, uh, you know, if that just, you know, made sense for you from a, a use standpoint, based on what you're doing, because this is obviously very creative, I mean, you really, it's like you dropped a whole town from the sky. Um, and it's, and I'm not being, trying to be rude, I'm just saying it's a very, very thoughtful plan, and I, I appreciate that. Uh, but, you know, my concern is, is that the density that, that you prescribe is already been prescribed in this community right outside this door, right in the, in our DDA area where we have a core and an edge group where we are asking for restaurants, we're asking for condos and, and, you know, active adult type living. I mean, we have property that's zoned and contemplates this kind of density, this kind of arrangement, but it's right here. It's, it's a couple miles away from where you're, where you're doing it. So I don't wanna tell you that, um, that your, your, your plan isn't thoughtful, it is, and I'm not saying that an arrangement of some sort, I mean, obviously, the Irwins have the right, like we all do, to sell our property. It was meant, I mean, I love the orchard, I go there too, but you can't make Bill run the orchard till he's 100. Uh, you know, he wants to sell the land, and something's going to happen there. But this is just too much for me at this point, and I'm uncomfortable with that. And I hope I didn't repeat too much of what everyone else has said, but I think the planning commission, I'd agree for the most part with what was said there too. So I, you, you have come forward with some creative ideas, and if, you know, you would be willing to revise this plan significantly, then I think that there could be a next step for this. Uh, it's obviously up to you. Some of our consultants have recommended that you go back and resubmit conceptual and have another discussion, but I don't know that that's gonna cha, I mean, we're looking at, I think someone said 197% density bonus or increase. I mean, if that goes to 187, or 120, or 100, I mean, that's still a lot. So I would just giving you feedback now, there, there's a long way to go before I think I could personally be comfortable with something here. Understanding something's gonna happen, I just, this is too much.
Well, that's, I appreciate the feedback. I mean, that's the whole idea behind this conceptual, is they, is to get feedback. We're trying to say, these are the things we could provide with this level of density, and if we've got the density, we gotta see where we are, you know, it's, and it's a, to give and take, because everything that we provide is real dollars, you know, and it's, you're right, it's millions on, on the S curve. So, thank you, I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, thanks. Go ahead, Chris.
All right. Well, I guess I'll start by saying I pretty much agree with what everybody said here, except just the planning commissioner Hoffman's comments. I disagree with those, saying it's a home-run project. I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. I will address the, the apple spraying that trustee Hicks brought up. As I mentioned, I do live adjacent to it, and Bill and Linda have been great neighbors, and they, they do their thing, they spray the apples, and, you know, I guess knowing that when I moved in, it's never really been a bothersome thing, so, you know, if a plan like this, you know, moves forward, it, obviously, the residents would be, the future homeowners would be notified of that, and, you know, not a big deal. I do, you know, it'd be great if the, the donuts could continue forward, that's always a great smell in the mornings. I frequent that a lot, so, um, but to go through my comments, Sean kinda touched on the, the, the density calculation. I guess I, I had concern on that, including, um, the overall residential dwellings per acre. It's more of a question, um, uh, for the planner, is that calculation includes the entire acreage of the site, it does not exclude the local retail or commercial, I guess basically the non-residential uses. So the accuracy of that calculation, if you take out the non-residential uses, then that's more, we're, we're pushing three units per acre residential. So I guess I want Patrick to confirm that unit, that dwelling unit per acre in the, in the future. The, the lot sizes, you know, with the R1 zoning, typically the underlying lot size is 35,000 square feet, you know, we're reducing those down to 16, 70-foot lots. With a PD, you know, minimum 20% open space, it condenses all the lots down to roughly 80% the size. These lots are basically being reduced to a very small amount, 80 to 76% reduction in those lot sizes. So that's, you know, a concern with this. I have a preference of, and it's gonna sound silly, but it's a preference of actually less open space in larger lots because you're way over the open space requirement. Question two on the tap parcel, uh, I sat on the planning commission prior to being on the board, and there were a couple proposals on the tap parcel there. Those showed wetland areas on the tap parcel, so I, I guess my question is, those aren't being shown on the, on your plans, but just check with whoever did your wetland delineations, but there are three pocket wetlands that were on there in the north center, south center, and the southeast corner of that parcel. And I know that would have an impact on the, on the parallel plan. Some layout comments, and I think that was addressed in Patrick's letter of the dead-end cul-de-sac for the office areas. Just checking in the future with your access to the village flats and townhomes, that's on, that's gonna be on the S curve of the relocated Kent Lake. I know you'll meet with the road commission, so just something to make sure that they're Village Center, trustee Hicks asked about the ownership of the, the amenities. You've got a public-private, and I guess just the general question is, that's just gotta get ironed out. Who's, who's gonna maintain these facilities? If they're privately owned, then obviously privately maintained, like the restaurant and retail, I assume, would just be, you know, whatever tenant or whoever owns those buildings. The areas like the neighborhood parks, the dog park, the corn maze, that kind of stuff is gonna be, sounds like it's gonna be owned within the homeowners association. So it was mentioned about Peters Barn and Pinehurst, and just making sure that the homeowners association fees aren't crazy expensive or don't escalate on there, it's, it's a concern. The community building uses that are suggested, like the farmer's market and the cafe and stuff, you know, since this is a PD, I assume those would be deed restricted uses within those particular structures? Is that what you're thinking of when you write the plan development agreement?
The only deed restriction we're talking about was the, for the orchard, or the cider mill itself.
I guess maybe I...
Clearly, we could discuss it as we go forward, I didn't really contemplate...
Or use restriction, I think, might be...
The other buildings.
The appropriate term. So I mean, uh, just, just because if it says retail, we don't know what kind of retail is it, you know, this general would be considered like a B1 use, or, or that specific to, you know, whatever, I guess that can be ironed out in the plan development agreement. The amenities and open space plan that's been provided, um, you know, we've, we've been here before, I like the, the trails, the offsite amenities that are provided. I mean, you've, you've come up with about almost 10 miles worth of trails, um, which, you know, that's, that's fantastic. I mean, it's, that's a great amenity for the site. Just a few comments or suggestions, just, and Patrick brought it up in his letter, making sure that they do connect to the existing trails at CVS and the church. As a community benefit too, um, it would be fantastic if these would extend, um, further south to tie in some of the adjacent neighborhoods, whether it be south to Deer Creek, Serene Court, um, also can, uh, at a minimum, a pedestrian connection to Barclay Drive to the east, Tabori Circle. And, you know, if, if you go outside, if you're able to go north to the elementary school, you know, again, with the amount of people that do drive and drop off their kids, and, you know, if they can get on a bike and literally coast down the hill to school, hey, maybe that's, maybe that helps with the, the traffic argument. The product, product plans that you've presented, it'd be nice to see floor plans in the future, I know that's part of the submittal process, but I don't have a lot of general complaints with the look of it. I mean, it is definitely, um, meeting the style that's, that's out there now. A question on some of the retreat active adult features and villa active adult features, are those intended to be a 55 and older restriction, or are those just the product names? I know you did Legacy Alliance, which had that, um, age restriction in those.
Um, you know, typically, what I've done is not age restricted. This was, the one place I did was Legacy Alliance, and it worked out fine. I mean, if we, if we're not 100% or 95% age restricted, as you recall, 20% could be under the oldest, the youngest, I'm sorry, the oldest person in the house could be under 55 for 20% of the houses, but I think it's, like I said, 90, 95% hits the bill. So I could probably go either way there. I tend to not restrict, but that's clearly a discussion we can have.
Okay. Um, just something, I guess, in the future. The, um, I guess with the estate, single-family lots, again, estate lots that are 90 feet wide, that doesn't really meet the definition of an estate, especially when you have the surrounding homes to the south of Deer Creek, and then to the east in Martindale Meadows, which have larger lot sizes than that. I would like to see those as, as larger home sites. Again, that's kind of a blanket thing, which would, you know, fix the, the density issue as well. Being the engineer up here, I guess I'll go talk utilities and drainage, because that's exciting to me, but maybe not to any other people. Just offsite, I shouldn't say offsite, onsite water main extensions, bringing the utilities to the edge of the property and providing stubs for future connections to adjacent neighborhoods. Um, you know, you're gonna be adjacent to the Martindale Meadows neighborhood, the Orchard's Edge neighborhood, any type of opportunities to at least stub it to your property line should be, uh, explored. Same with the sanitary sewer as well. Leslie mentioned in her letter about the sanitary sewer master plan and the 45 sewer taps going north and the rest flowing south for the master plan. Also, with, the, the way it is set up now with the sanitary sewer, you have two pump stations proposed, so that's, you know, added maintenance for the township, so if it adheres to the sewer master plan, then that would eliminate one of the pump stations, which helps the sewer customers out. I'm not a sewer customer, but Sean is, so...
He called me out.
I am. And there are probably other sewer customers out here too that would have to...
I'm a sewer customer, just while we're all this closing. And I live, I live a mile and a half away.
So your comments no longer apply?
I don't know. I'll have to get back to you.
Storm, stormwater management, just some, just observations. I know it's early on, but the, the pond to the very south, southwest, it's just showing arrows going out to private property and Newman Farms. I don't know if that's, that's an official drainage course, or whatever, I guess that'll get worked out. And also, um, the, the tap parcel, the very southeast corner, that is a low spot that's being proposed to get drained up to the north. I'll let your engineer figure that one out, because it does look like, it could be a The, the parallel plan, um...
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
It's very dry in here.
It is. 191 lots, I think, are on your current parallel plan. To establish the density, again, with the, the little wetland areas and, and the tap parcel, that, that's gonna affect it. The, and my question again to Patrick is whether or not, you know, establishing the density based on the parallel plan and excluding the commercial area. Um, we have some community benefits that were proposed. Trustee Hicks mentioned the preservation of the orchard, and I agree with his comments on it. Straightening out Kent Lake Road is a community benefit. Trustee O'Neil mentioned that we do actually have budgeted in 2019, uh, traffic signal for Kent Lake and Silver Lake Road, um, that obviously hasn't come up because this is here, and obviously, we're not gonna build it if something like this gets realigned, but we're aware of it. So that is probably the biggest, the biggest benefit that is being provided with this, that and the extensive trail system. The village center, you know, I kinda touched on it, it's a bit risky with some of those refurbished buildings. Again, just if the HOA can handle those costs, I just don't want this to come back like some of the others, and I'll leave that into your, your guys' hands on how that...
We would hope that the village center would be part of the HOA.
That is true. Yep, you were correct. Sorry about that. The municipal building, I don't believe, I think that's been discussed, and we don't have anything slated in this area. The ladder truck funding, I know, uh, working with the fire chief when we did the capital improvements plan, he is budgeting for that. Obviously, a contribution toward that is, would benefit township-wide, so that is a community benefit. You mentioned about the soil remediation with the arsenic soil, taking out the top six inches throughout the, the site. Question about how do, how is, what provisions are being made to prevent that, the arsenic soil from being blown away during that process? If there's dust that's gonna be coming across onto neighboring properties, is the provisions on that? I just, you know, future some of those is trying to figure that.
What we do this, and I think we do it often, is we have a plan that's approved by the DEQ, and then we go ahead and we execute the plan, retest, and then show them the results, and then they listen. So it's all been done before.
Okay. It's more or less my concern is that what the act of removing the soil is gonna kick up a bunch of dust, and if that arsenic dust blows onto neighboring properties, that, you know, certain soil erosion, wind erosion control measures should be at least established. And if it's per DEQ guidelines, then, and that's, that's the way it's, it's gonna go. Patrick mentioned that a lot of the trees are under agricultural designation, so there's no, um, they can be removed without any replacement, I guess. Is that for all the trees on site, or is that, I assume it's the majority of the trees, or are there any trees that would need to be replaced? Or do we not know that at this time?
None that we can find right now. The tree preservation ordinance calls out specific parcels that are in agricultural production at the time the ordinance was written, and it specifically exempts those, but over time, some parcels have been split, parcel numbers change. So based on what we were able to see, I don't think any of them are subject to the tree preservation ordinance, but that is something we'll be double-checking when we get to preliminary review.
Okay. Um, I know the traffic impact studies has to be updated or redone. I would like to see, I did notice in your, um, your application packet when I read through it about the traffic study, that the traffic counts were taken on August 2nd, which is prior to school being in session. I would recommend that you take those when school's in session, because it's a, it's a big difference. And also, um, the growth rate that was used in the traffic impact study was a half a percent. I mean, the township's increased in population 32% over the last 10 years, so a half a percent growth factor is grossly low. So talk to your traffic engineer on that one. The, just a general comment too, with the Northville Village density and project, that was close to M14 such as this is close to 96. The difference with the Northville Village is though Beck Road is a boulevard there, and 5 Mile is, is five lanes wide. We only have two lanes right now, and what it looks like on your plan is two lanes and maybe a small section of three lanes. So the definite, you know, capacity improvements on this road network will definitely be needed as well.
On 5 Mile, actually, there's only two lanes toward the property.
Toward the west of it?
Yes. That's where I'm property.
I'll check. The, um, again, touching on the master plan issues with this project, I was part of the 2012 and 2015 master plan process. The interpretation of this section when we reviewed it in 2015 is, yes, it's definitely limited in traffic capacity because it's two-lane roads. This is one of the last areas of the township that probably has a significant amount of R1.0 zoning. Other areas within the township have kind of gotten a little higher density, the R.5 or R.3. So, um, seeing that there's not many larger lot homes that are being built within our township, and these are probably one of the last areas that's still zoned for it, and a last opportunity to diversify our entire housing stock for those types of homes. You mentioned senior housing, that was a carrot attached to the 20... You mentioned senior housing. That was a carrot attached to the 2015 amendment to actually encourage senior housing development because at the time we had none. Since then, Legacy of Lyon has taken advantage of that. We have Pearl Development down on Pontiac Trail near Amal and actually a third one coming in as well. So we do have those facilities in there and I know you didn't, you haven't decided whether or not you're going to specifically regulate these as senior housing, 55 and older, but, you know, that was part of that, that carrot. The, I guess my main concern is that with the master plan, it was all supposed to be single-family housing or residential. So there was no commercial, there was no multifamily, not even, you know, maybe some senior housing, but no office. And those are the areas that don't conform with the master plan. We are, and I have concern too with the commercial and village center that we're going to be taking away from our DDA because this, this area is not within the downtown development authority. And it's basically almost equidistant between the city of South Lyon and our downtown. So, you know, it doesn't seem to fit in my mind that it would, you know, it could take away and hurt us in other, other areas. The economic impact too was negative, but for the general fund, but again, as this progresses, we'll get those numbers updated and see if that can get better. One thing Patrick mentioned that, I don't know if, we haven't discussed as a board, but with that northwest property being less than 40 acres, does that allow for it to be contiguous option with the PD? My opinion is with the road realignment, it, you know, yes, and with everything going on, I have no issue with including that parcel as part of the PD. I think, you know, I think that's fine. I get, overall, you know, it really comes down to not conforming with the township master plan. The density is extreme. It's higher than any other one that we've had. I think we've maybe hit 46% at most, maybe 50%. I'm trying to, I was dragging my brain trying to think of it. And I've been on the planning commission since 2010 and I'm a contributor just recently and sat through many of these types of development presentations and seen a lot of people that have come and emailed and said their piece, but this particular plan has had the most emails that we've ever seen on any, that I've ever seen on any plan. And I'd say all but maybe two were concerned about not following the master plan and not having, you know, not meeting the density requirements. So, I think the public has spoken, I've spoken, the elected officials have, you know, all spoken, and there's got, going to have to be some significant changes to get this down to match the master plan.
I appreciate this awful comment.
Okay, so.
One more comment?
Sure.
Just, an observation, the Irwins worked all year, but actually the cider and donuts was all, took place in the three-month period. I don't know, the people aren't going to be there, I guess, the rest of the year, unless it's strictly local.
All right, and like I said, the, they're going to, the cider mill operator that we've identified was going to have a little restaurant café that I would think that he would keep open all year round.
That's all I had.
Is anyone else, anyone add anything? Well, good. Okay, so before we open this up for comment from the public, I'd like to kind of baseline this whole thing. I think that the conceptual plan probably needs work from, what you gather from this board. And I think a big sticking point is the, is how dense the project is. And the traffic is also part of the situation. I know we're going to have to get traffic counts and we're going to go through that. Oakland County is going to have to jump off this thing. And the schools is another factor with the overabundance of kids. I mean, and all that stuff we've talked about. So that's kind of the bottom line for maybe the consensus of the board. I mean, I know we got into a little more detail than, than that, but that's kind of where we're at. And at this time, it's about 9:40. I'd like to go ahead and offer the public to come on up. I'd like to do that till 10 o'clock if you'd like to. If you wanted to run that comment till 10 o'clock, we can take some, some comments for the public. But I would really like you to keep new ideas, maybe something that you haven't heard, and then we can get this moving. So that being said, does anyone who want to come up to the podium and go ahead and give some comments?
And please state your names and address of the record. Thank you.
28200, Seville Drive. So I live in that Deer Creek subdivision just south of this.
And one other thing, could we keep him about two minutes of these, if we could, please? Just so people can get up there. Thank you. Maybe we'll try to give you more if we need to, but go ahead.
I appreciate that. I do appreciate a lot of the comments here about Mr. Dolan talking about overcrowding in South Lyon schools. I agree. Increased traffic. Mr. Hicks liked to see three lanes if possible. No matter what, the density is still a huge issue, as brought up by, as well as six out of seven of the people in the planning commission. One out of those seven heard Mr. Hicks' comments indicated that if you look at the plan by itself, it's a great plan. Mr. Neal commented it thought of the sky and dropped into Lyon Township, that's what it looks like. It's more appropriate for Northville. It's more appropriate for Plymouth or Canton, but not this location in Lyon Township. It's zoned R1.0. It's a major thoroughfare for folks coming in and out of South Lyon. Secondly, the, or lastly, the cleanup was stated as a, the soil was stated as a community benefit. I don't see it as a community benefit. It's a development requirement. It doesn't benefit us for them cleaning it up. They can't develop it unless they clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are great comments.
First of all, I would just like to start by saying that everybody's here because of our love for the township. And this is only such a small portion of people who feel very strongly about township the way it is. And I'm so relieved to hear so much agreement about concern for density and the desire to stay with the master plan and to not rezone things. I mean, the density on this side of the village is wonderful. I think it's really essential that we keep the integrity and the essence of our township, which is more rural, and we'd like to keep that for as long as possible. Listening to the citizens, to your residents is paramount. I think it's important to do the right thing for the people of the township and not what's right for a developer or what generates the most revenue. I don't think that the benefits that they propose outweigh the negatives. Just looking at the picture, I just find it kind of ironic that four out of the six pictures up there represent agriculture and rural. And so, it's like they're trying to make you think that that's what they're turning it into, but those are the things that will disappear. So, also, the irony of bringing up Northville, my daughter and her family live in Northville, and they say it is a disaster over there. There is so much congestion, so much traffic, pedestrian and automobile traffic. That, Northville is just a shadow of what it used to be, and it's not a good place to live anymore just because of the density. So, I do like the pictures of the things that they showed, the design of the houses, but the density is just beyond questionable. So, again, I encourage you to continue to listen to your citizens. Thank you.
How you doing?
Good. My name is Dave Bastinelli. I live in Saddle Creek. Address is 61130. I don't need to move. I'm actually for the project. I think it's a really, really well-thought-out plan. I think it's actually quite impressive the way that they designed it. My three positive key points are redirecting Kent Lake Road. It is, it's dangerous kind of coming off of that tee. The second, maintaining the cider mill and the orchard. And number three, based on the amount of acreage, I don't think the density's, I think it seems to fit it very well, especially with mixed use and with the amount of acreage dedicated to the parks, recreation and space. I just wanted to give my input. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else like to come up?
My name is Kevin Mason, 26912 Bluegrass Court. I addressed the planning commission previously. I echo a number of your comments. One of the things that keeps being mentioned is open space, pedestrian parks. I mean, if you want me to mention a couple of things that are new, we have Island Lake, we have Kensington, we have a new park that you're putting in. How many more parks do you need in this area? It seems like we have adequate access to open space and parks. I think the biggest thing again is, is the density. Progress is inevitable. I think that's very clear, no matter where you're at. But I think that we have to live with the, the master plan as it is. I guess I would take this in 2012, it was zoned as agricultural. 2015, it was amended. That area, the Irwin area particularly, was amended to essentially say R1 and an agricultural mix. I guess I would just say, how many times are we going to go back and reevaluate it? If we've reevaluated it in 2012, again, 2015, now we're going to reevaluate it in 2019. I think we should just stick to the master plan and I echo a number of your comments. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else like to come on up? How you doing?
Excellent. How are you?
Good, good. Thank you.
Franco Miesko, 29817 Pine Tree Drive. I'll keep it brief. I agree with everyone that the density is just way too much. I'm new to the township. We've only lived here almost two years at this point. And part of the reason we moved out here was the fact that it was a little more rural. The fact that we could get a little more land. There's a subdivision going in behind us or getting planned currently, and part of that sucks and it just, my brother lives in Northville and he has a postage stamp for backyard. My nieces can't, they come to our house to play. It just sucks when a lot of these developers come in and they want to do .2 acres, .18 acres. It'd just be nice if it was a half, even half acre. I'm not saying they have to stay at one. It'd be nice if they stuck to the master plan, but it'd be great if it was even just half acre parcels. Something where people could get a little bit of land. So many people want to try and move out of cities and just kind of have a little more land to themselves. And something like this where you're putting, you know, four or five houses on an acre after you take out the open space, it just doesn't seem like it's what Lyon Township is. And I really love it for not, not to become ten mile again. Thank you.
Thank you. Franco.
I just wanted to point out that with all of these houses going in, when we lived in Westland and moved into the subdivision we were in, there were little kids. I'm like, oh, this is great. This has got a lot of kids to play with. Those kids got cars when they grew up. And you're talking about trying to find a parking spot when you get home from work because they get out of school before you do. So that can be a real issue with that many offices.
Parking is.
You've got to be able to park your car.
Thank you, Sharon.
Hi. My name is Jessica Strain, 28091 Galleon Drive. I also live in the Deer Creek subdivision. I just wanted to come up with a couple of comments that I hadn't heard yet. The first is, when they talk about community benefits, they talked about with respect to future residents and on the community at large. I think accessibility is a big part of that. Mrs. Christian mentioned the parking aspect. I think accessibility, you know, we have to have parking. And Mr. Amel mentioned the trail extensions. The only way they're accessible is if they send them on to the adjacent neighborhoods. Same thing with the commercial area. I didn't see a lot of parking on the plan. We can't use it if we can't perfectly, we're rural. I did want to say that I really appreciate the level of effort put into the mixed housing. I think, you know, promoting alternative housing is important, but I personally would only accept that if we can maintain the overall density of the area. I don't want to see, you know, what was on that plan, those huge neighborhoods on very small lots. That's not what is currently planned for the area and I think we should stick to the master plan. And I also wanted to echo Mr. O'Neil's comments that we can't control what the Irwins do with their property. If they want to sell it, they're going to sell it, but we can control what is zoned for and we should stick to what is zoned for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good comments.
Hi, my name's Brad Spory, 61069 Topsfield. I'm in the Orchard Edge Estates. I think most of my points have been addressed with all of your comments from the board. That's refreshing to hear. That said, I think most of us here probably don't have the intention to oppose the sale of Irwins. They have a right to sell their property. I think as Sean mentioned, or Mr. O'Neil mentioned earlier, they certainly have the right to sell their property. The largest problem, and we've mentioned it many times, is the density, right? And I think that's going to, you know, that's going to stick. And everybody mentions the master plan. I won't mention that again. I think that's kind of a beat to death, but it's, it's very true, good points. I think everyone realizes that at some point this property will be developed, but I don't think we've yet seen a plan that, that completely encompasses the master plan, right? It's a great concept. I just think if it was acre-plus lots, then I think some of us could at least come closer to being on board with it, right? Very concerned with the center orchard deeded situation that we, that you all brought up. But yeah, I think, in summary, I think it's, the master plan is something that we, that should be stopped in this area as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
I do want to say one thing. The, the orchard part of this whole project, I believe, was kind of because everyone wanted to keep the orchard night. And I think that's probably why it was incorporated. Just, that's all I'm saying. I think that's why it got there the way it did. The heritage and the orchard.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else want to, come on up?
Kim Bullard, 2976 Pine Tree Drive. My biggest concern, obviously, is density, but besides that, we have the city of South Lyon, which funnels a lot of our traffic. And has anybody tried to drive their middle schooler, to the middle school? One of two right next door to each other. So, that's going to bring, you know, that many more cars towards that area as well. And that's a concern. Getting home, some people don't go home on the expressway. Some people take Pontiac Trail. And it's already really bad coming home Pontiac Trail from Southern Mile, straight down to Pontiac Trail and Pontiac Trail straight up, you're in a line of traffic during rush hour. So, that's another concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come up?
Hi, Chris Bowler, 30111 Cobblestone Lane. We're pretty close to this development and like all of you, I'm pretty appalled at the density of it. We all knew, I've been out here 21 years. We all knew, I've been out here 21 years, and we all knew at some point the orchard would be developed. We all figured, well, it'll probably be homes, R1, and we can live with that because we live in areas where there's homes. My major concern outside of the density is the office backing up to residential areas. I'm worried about light pollution because if you have an office space, you're going to light it to make sure it stays secure. And I already lose a lot of being able to see the stars that we used to have out here at night. You can't see that. I have to listen to I-96, which is way louder than it used to be. I think trustee Carcony mentioned that at the planning commission meeting. I'm also concerned with possibly putting a commercial development right on Pontiac Trail there. And that sounds like a strip mall to me. I had a chance to buy in Canton. I didn't buy in Canton because we didn't want that. And if we want to get another Canton, that's exactly what this is going to be. So that's my feeling on it. We all know it's going to be developed. And Mr. Irwin absolutely has a right to sell his property, but we as township have a right to decide what goes there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good comments, Chris.
Anyone else want to come on up? We still got some, a few minutes. No one else? Okay. Well, I hope you got a little direction from that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the presentation and thank everybody for being very respectful. That's really nice to see that we have great resonance in the township. Thank you all for that.
I apologize for my coughing. I've been very sick, but I didn't want to miss tonight's meeting, so I apologize. I did the best I could.
Do you want to take a break?
Someone should do it, Lisa. She's here. All right, they're on their way back in, so let's go ahead and move forward. We did change the agenda around a little bit here for the audience that we had. So our next agenda item is the approval for the new windows for both fire stations. So Ken, you want to come on up and talk to us about that a little bit?
It's not approved?
No, I put them on the list, so we'll go through two more.
You did? Okay. Oh, great. I remember that because of the timing.
He moved the timing.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I forgot about that.
Hello.
How you doing?
Hi, Ken.
Yeah, hello. Okay. So our, both of our stations were built and opened in 2001. And we have a thermal issue with the windows as far as they're old, the offices, the dorms. It's just, it's very cold, not efficient, not economical. And we've had three companies come out and give us quotes. And the one company that I'd like to go with if you would consider is a local company, Pure Energy Window. There are a lot of reasons and I think that was attached in the packet. But to replace all the windows on both fire stations would come to $37,503. There was a typo that I had that it would come out of Capital Outlay, which is 970.000, not 930.
Been meaning to ask about that. Say, had been meaning to ask about that.
Yes. Mr. O'Neil let me know about it already, so that's appreciated.
So by the looks of this, you do have it in your budget?
We do.
Okay. I think this is something, we have to keep the stations energy efficient and I think this is a good way to do that. And this is both stations, so this is a good thing.
And it's local.
You want to have any questions for Ken about this? Motion to be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve new windows for both fire stations for $37,503, Pure Energy Window Company from the Capital Outlay pine item in the fire department budget.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
I like that you're using a local company.
I do too.
Perfect.
Thanks too. Okay, moving on to the Orchards of Lion Outlot Use Interpretation. And I don't think you have anything on this, Patrick.
There's nothing new.
Yeah, basically, trying to figure out what to do with the outlots there on Lion. Okay, so. Team to get away from us to help you out with that? Looks like he knows what he's doing there.
That's good.
Yeah, that is good. Hey, Robert, do you mind turning that screen just a little bit towards us a little more?
I can't, I can't really see it.
Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, don't put a dollar in the jar I had once. Thanks. We actually sent them back to him, a presentation type thing. Yeah. Just to kind of help get an idea. The same thing I knew this, it's an unfinished business. It's very sweet of you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nagendra Aita. I'm one of the directors at NB Square LLC. I just want to give you background initially what happened in the last board meeting. So we acquired a parcel number 2104401026. So before buying the property, we have done our due diligence with the Lion Township and obtained concurrence for multi-family zoning. And later Township corrected the zoning to PDU Plan Development Unit. So PDU, as per the PDU document, we reviewed it. It allows a daycare or other facility as part of the exhibit D. I just want to give you the background so that we started last meeting.
Thank you.
And so, so the proposed, so what we thought is last time, we requested to, instead of a daycare center, it's a similar type of facility, could be an office space. So we wanted to request the board to give us permission to build an office space. It is a similar type of unit, like how you have a daycare center. So it's been requested by the board to come back with some of the designs and proposals to show how it looks like and compare both units and similarities between the two units. So that's what we are here today to present some of the design, to show you how it blends with the community around it so that it's acceptable for all of you. So that's the thing. The board preferred that proposed plan meet the following two aspects. One is the design, similar to the daycare facility, and then the other one is the operational hours, similar to the daycare facility. So the next slide here, we are talking about the proposal. The general office, medical office facilities such as dental office, insurance office, real estate office, or engineering services office, law office, optometry office, chiropractor office, physical therapy office, pain medicine center, primary care office, other professional office. So these are not limited to what we have listed, but these are the things which basically have the similar type of office hours and the other things, aspects that meets the daycare center. So some of the things we want to talk about is office versus daycare. Similar timing pattern operates between 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Uniform traffic pattern versus daycare has peak pattern in the morning and evenings, quiet and calm noise levels compared to the daycare. Similar design, we wanted to have a similar design concept which blends into whatever we have the development there. Same square footage adds more value to the neighborhood businesses. So just to give an example of the daycare center timing versus other spaces, how it will be. So we just showed an idea to get an idea. This is the proposed layout. Whatever I'm presenting today is just a concept. When we go to the actual, I mean, when we go to the actual permissions, we will be making sure everything is, parking spaces, everything up to the code of the township. So building square foot, footprint is of 120 by 100 feet. Number of store is one and the building size is about 12,000 square foot. Building frontage is about 120 square feet. Building height is about 22 feet and parking about 45 to 55. Again, coming to the parking, this is basically just with very high level what we have given, but we will meet to the code of the township and make sure whatever the parking lot, if you have to reduce the square footage, depending on the actual, when we go to the permissions, we will make sure that we fit into that. This is just a general idea to get a feeling of how it looks like, that's what we are showing here. This is how the, I mean, the design looks, so which blends into the community which is already existing. So we came out with a plan to make sure that it blends into whatever we have there. So that's another request we got last time when we met with the board. So we want to make sure that we don't want to design something different than what it looks there. So we want to make sure it blends into the community area. This is another top view, so to show that how the residential, I mean, houses have the roof, we want to make sure that we have the similar type of pattern. This is a front view of the facility, the building. This is the side view of the building. So proposed, I just, I mean, we have another, just for review purposes only, we're just not proposing this or anything like that, but just to show you, even if we go two-story, what happens and how it blends to the neighboring apartment building we have, it comes to the same level. We just want to show this just for your reference purposes. So this is basically a building footprint of 94 feet by 75 feet. Number of store is two. Building size is about 14,000 square foot. The other one was 12,000. This is the 14,000. Only thing, I mean, there's only 2,000 square foot of difference, but it gives more space for us. That's what we are trying to do here. And building frontage is about 94 feet. Building height is about 36 feet and parking about 55 to 65. We have, we'll have more scope for landscaping because we have more space, so we want to beautify the area better with this type of approach. And also it blends perfectly with existing Pendleton apartments because the Pendleton apartments is about the similar type of height, what we're going to, we're just showing here. This is, I just want to give you a picture of how it looks like next to the Pendleton apartment, how this proposed building will look like, just to give you an idea. So basically what we are here is to ask you for last time, last time you asked, I mean, we also have plans we develop. If you want to see that, we can give you some of those copies. But we are here to see positive outcome today to allow us to go for this office building and really appreciate your help.
Okay. Well, basically, that's what they're here for, the interpretation of the.
Interpretation.
Yes.
Exactly.
To know if they can do an office instead of a daycare. So basically, they've done everything we've asked them. They've brought back some concept plans to kind of give us an idea of what they could put on that. And now I guess it's up to this board to, if it's good for them or not. I mean, we can ask questions now, that's what they're here for.
And also we just want to show you some video of our account. Again, this is basic initial concept.
Concept.
This will change everything when we come.
Well, I'll tell you, I myself, I think an office building on that piece of property is a good fit. I don't see a lot of other things you could do and, being if you keep it one story, I think that's a good thing. And if it has the office hours of the daycare center, I'm thinking it's a practical fit. I think we have a lot of daycare centers right in this area, so.
I agree.
And that's my opinion. And that's my opinion.
Would you, would you be agreeable to making sure it's only the one story versus the two?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely.
And you identify it as a height of 22 feet for the office?
Yeah, that is like, that is, basically, we will conform with when once it comes like, it will be within that.
Is that what we have as a general height for daycare centers? Or is there a height limit for something like a daycare center?
I think in general, the height in the PD District, I'll have to look it up on the non-residential uses. I think it's higher than 22, though.
A daycare could be, or anything could be.
I think it groups the non-residential uses in, but I'll look up here and make sure.
Definitely, whatever is the requirement, we will be able to meet that.
Okay.
That's not, yeah, that's not a problem.
I mean, I like the residential look to it.
See, that's what we, last time, so we want, we tried different options, finally we wanted to have that look and feel, so it blends into that.
How long are we gonna wait to see some flowers?
Does, uh.
No, we definitely want to bring value to the community and for the Lion Township. And then also, we wanted to see, there is a pond next to it, we want to beautify it so that puts some nice light and something, I don't know, if you allow, we can put something different, so make it nice, beautiful.
Is there any difference, Patrick, with like with lighting versus, at a daycare facility versus lighting for an office building?
If they keep the same hours, generally not, but if the office is open at night, they'll want to light their parking lot, same as daycares would want to light it, make sure it's lit in the morning when they have that early morning drop-off and it's still dark in the morning like it is now. I mean, both uses will have the same issues of how much do you light, you know, during the early a.m. hours and the late p.m. hours when there's nobody around. So they would still have to meet the lighting standards regardless.
Okay, so it would be the same lighting standards whether it would be a single-story office as a daycare center?
Yes.
I think there's one thing that needs to be clarified when I'm looking at this. We're talking about the, the one slide shows that similar timing pattern operates between 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., okay, which is a typical daycare. But if you look farther down, this Loving Care South Lion, you'll see that it shows it operating from 7:00 till 11:30 p.m. Right. Exactly, but that's not typical for a daycare. So I think you probably need to specify on the record what you're talking about in terms of the hours.
I guess the way I kind of looked at this was similar to last time, is that, you know, I asked myself certain questions, like, does this proposed use of a one-story office building, is that, you know, traffic-wise, is that less than the daycare? You know, it probably is. Will this use have similar or less hours as a daycare? Sounds like you're going to at least match those hours, you know, excluding that evening hours.
Yes.
Noise-wise, it's going to be less noisy than a daycare, especially one that would have an outdoor, you know, play area. Building height, you know, that's already been talked about. And then, the one that I'm not sure about is the lighting. I think that, you know, it was just being touched on, is like, when does, when do the lights turn off, just because there are single-family homes, you know, around there too. So if that's set up as, you know, from 7:00 to 7:00 or whatever the hours of operation, or maybe a little bit before, a little bit after, I, you know, I don't think that it has any, that's really my only concerns on it. So I think this is pretty good.
And to answer the question about the height, the max height in the Plan Development District for residential and commercial and office buildings are 30 feet.
So you were going to do that.
30 feet?
Any other questions?
I know this is not, I mean, the site plan is not matching what's really out there, and I know we're not here to talk about the site plan, it's more just the look of the building.
Yeah, just to get an idea.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm having a hard time, yeah, because there's no road where the road is.
That's what I just said initially when I started.
Yeah, right.
Just to get an idea, a feel of it, but when we come back, we'll come up everything.
Sure. Yeah, I think the one story is definitely, I mean, I agree with what's been said, but I think the one story is a must, hours of operation are pretty key as a part of this interpretation, that it be not real early or real late, and that, you know, special attention's paid to all of the buffering between this building and this site and the residents that are behind it. You know, again, a daycare center was contemplated, and I think this will be a quieter use, but it doesn't mean we still don't have to look at all the specifics of the operation.
Thank you.
So.
I agree with all my colleagues, and I appreciate that you came back with a rendering of the building so that we could get a better look at it. I also agree with one story. I agree it's going to be quieter, and I actually like it, so.
Thank you.
And the use is really needed. There is no office use for, left in the township, so I think, I think it's going to be a good addition there on that corner.
So what do we need? Do we need to make a motion to allow this to?
What you're going to do is interpret it, that the other uses, your interpretation, the other uses would include a one-story office building, meeting all the height requirements, lighting requirements, landscaping and screening requirements, et cetera, of the PD and the ordinance, and listed to the hours of, general hours of operation of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and to the general lists of offices that they have asked for in their proposal. I made that too long for you to repeat, didn't I?
Well, it's not too long for somebody to say that's the motion.
That's my motion. I'm making that as my motion. Because I'm sick.
Does that cover it all, Patrick?
I believe it does. I believe a lot will rely on the PD agreement itself, right? What you said is great.
Anybody want a second?
I have a second.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to change the interpretation to include office and everything else that went along with that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? There you go.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming back with that, too. That was, that was helpful. Okay, moving on, the consideration of the introduction of a conditional rezoning review for the Charter Township of Lion to Senior Independent Living AP-1909. And I think you're going to start this one out, right?
Uh, yes. We were back here a couple months ago at the January 7th board meeting for a first reading on the same conditional rezoning, but a different layout. And the conditional rezoning had passed the first reading. And between the first reading and what would have been the final reading, there were more specific dimensions that were measured in terms of the location of the conditional rezoning. And there were some issues with regard to, with the lot being surveyed and the precise lot lines, as well as some of the deductions that would have taken place for the existing and the proposed right-of-way. And so what they, what the applicant found was that the proposal to have 16 and 1/2 acres of RM2 property fell far short. And what they proposed doing was to try to modify some of the lines of the zoning to increase the amount of the RM2 area. And in doing so, when we were looking at it, it was determined that with changing the lot lines a considerable amount, we recommended to go back to the Planning Commission for a rehearing. And the Planning Commission did that, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, and what we'll see tonight are proposed boundaries based on the new application that was submitted in January. And at the February 25th meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the conditional rezoning application that's before you this evening. And essentially, what has been changed is that in the southeast part of the site, that's now proposed for the RM2. And then the northeast part of the site, there will be a remainder there of approximately 1.46 acres. That will remain as a B2 district. And so in our public notice, we had put in that the remainder that would be B2 is approximately 217, and a depth of approximately 295 feet. And we've had the applicant's engineer do the calculations in terms of surveying and legal descriptions, and the precise measurement there is pretty close. The frontage is proposed at 215.04, and then the depth is 294.97, giving an acreage of 1.46 for that B2. The remainder of the RM2 district, what's proposed, the net actually is a little bit lower. The net is at 16.25 acres, not the 16 and 1/2. So essentially, what that means is that instead of having the proposed 132 units that was previously proposed, this would be 130 units based on the reduction of the half-acre for the RM2 district. In our letter, February 27th, we've reviewed the findings of both the conditional rezoning standards and the general zoning standards. And the findings are much the same as they were back in our January letter, just in terms of impact on surrounding areas, the findings that we typically make, as well as the terms of the conditional rezoning agreement. So there aren't too many changes from our letter back in January, so I won't go over those unless we want to go back and revisit those. On page nine of our letter, we have a summary, and based on the analysis, we had recommended approval of the conditional rezoning based on 10 different findings there. It's on page nine going through into page 10. And our recommendation is that the conditional rezoning be approved as shown on the application and presented by the applicant, subject to four conditions being satisfied prior to the final reading. Those are, first, that the township attorney review the conditional rezoning agreement and make any necessary revisions or recommendations. Second, that the seal and signature of the preparer be included on the conditional rezoning plan. Third, that the conditional rezoning plan include a note that the plan is for illustrative purposes only, and that the locations of structures, parking, landscaping, screening, lighting, access, utilities, and stormwater will be determined at the time of site plan review. And finally, fourth, that the conditional rezoning plan include a survey that corresponds to the legal description in the CR agreement. So that concludes our review of the conditional rezoning, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Does everyone understand exactly what's going on here? Any questions for Patrick? No questions? Somebody want to make a motion to do this? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve AP-1906, formerly AP-1855, pro conditional rezoning application for, condition, what would it be? Since the introduction.
Okay.
Got a second from John?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, any other discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, finally. Our first one is the consideration of adoption of a mandatory ordinance for the Charter Township of Lion Ordinance Number 119, Chapter 48, Zoning Article 19, Site Development Standards applicable to the specific uses to amend the building height allowed for the senior housing in Section 19.3. This is second readings, all three of these are second readings. So any more discussion on that particular item?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 01-19 to amend Chapter 48, Zoning Article 19, Specific Uses, Section 19.3, Subsection D, Senior Housing, Subsection A. Building height, the maximum building height shall be 35 feet in height and a maximum of three stories.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. We'll call this one by roll, please.
Patricia Kerha?
Yes.
Christopher Anmo?
No.
Lisa Blay?
No.
Simon Yeh?
No.
You saw Cass?
Yes.
John Dorwin?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the next second reading, consideration, adoption of the ordinance for the Charter Township of Lion Number 2-19.
I will move the adoption of ordinance number 02-19.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, moving on. Next second reading. The ordinance for Number 3-19, Orchards of Lion PD between Grand River and Pond Lake Trail. This is also a second reading.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance Number 03-19.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.